Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having taken time, or you're busy today, to spend it with us this afternoon. And what a great audience. Jim was going to introduce everybody, but he couldn't remember everybody's names, so we're going to pass over that. But, you know, there's, fall must be in the air. And how we can tell around here is when Jim starts wearing the jacket. So it may be an early winter, so, but thanks again for being here. We're honored to have Reverend Kimball Arnold, better known as Charlie's mom, with St. Luke's Episcopal Church, to give our invocation today. Kimball, thanks for being here.
It's my pleasure. Let us pray. As the work of the City Council continues, we invoke the commitments that call us into service and sustain us through times of challenge, as well as times of joy, the values of freedom, civic duty and personal responsibility, understanding and inclusiveness, and the values of dignity and respect for all citizens of Prescott. We are grateful for those who step forward to serve as representatives of the citizens of this city. Send down upon those who hold office in this great city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. We offer prayers for all those who work for the city, that they may serve in their responsibilities to the best of their abilities. We offer thanks for the staff and for the time and research they prepare on issues facing the city, and for their well-prepared presentations to the City Council. We offer prayers also for the police and firefighters and all first responders. We give thanks for all who contribute to and support our city. Set us free this day from the spirit that makes for discord. Grant all dignity and peace as they work together. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, do you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dana, let's go to a roll call.
Mayor Kirkendall.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair. Absent, excused. Councilman Kukneal.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, any announcements, Craig? Okay, we have two proclamations today. The first one has to do with Constitution Week, and Councilman Greg LaZell will be presenting that, and you have fifteen or twenty that are going to receive it.
Join me, somebody come up here or accept the proclamation?
Yeah, there we go. Everybody come on up. Yeah, come on. Then you get five minutes each to respond.
Oh, no, you don't want to do that.
This is a proclamation for Constitution Week, which is September 17th through the 23rd, 2014. Whereas September 17th, 2014, marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designated September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Marlin D. Kirkendall, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights will never be regained. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Prescott to be affixed this second day of September of the year of our Lord 2014.
Somebody needs to respond.
Yeah, someone needs to respond.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
He needs a new one. He's getting all worn out. Thank you.
He needs one. I need one. Thank you.
Just want to thank you very much, on behalf of the General George Crook Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. The General George Crook Chapter was formed in Prescott in 1927. We've been around for quite a while and are very honored.
Thank you. Here. Have that.
Okay, our next proclamation is honoring the employer support of the Garden Reserve. Thank you for being here.
Employer Support of the Garden Reserve Week. Whereas National Garden Reserve Forces comprise nearly half of our nation's military strength and are essential to America's national security, Reserve component forces stand ready to answer the call and to serve, whether serving alongside active-duty counterparts all across the globe or responding to humanitarian crisis at home and abroad. And whereas employers provide critical support to members of the National Garden Reserve, allowing citizen warriors to serve whenever the nation calls, often foregoing financial gain and making sacrifices in the process. And whereas employer support is stronger than ever, more than 42 years after President Richard Nixon authorized the Secretary of Defense to establish the National Committee for Employer Support of the Garden Reserve. And whereas our nation is in debt to the citizen warriors, departing the comforts of home to ensure our freedoms remain intact, likewise, America pays special tribute to the commitment of dedicated and supportive employers who continue to make service in the Reserve components possible. And now therefore, I Marlin D. Kirkendall, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby declare September 22nd through the 26th National Employer Support of the Garden Reserve Week. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Larry Jacobs. I'm one of the Military Outreach Coordinators for the Northern Section of the Employer Support for the Garden Reserve. And I'm representing Darren Venters today, our Chair. And on behalf of Darren, I want to thank Mayor Kirkendall and the entire City Council of Prescott for all the support they have given us over the years. And I also want to thank Mayor Kirkendall for his son Patrick, who's the head of the Employer Support for the Garden Reserve, for the whole state of California and all the work that he does over there. Thank you very much.
Chamber of Commerce, thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me, Mr. Mayor, Council. First, I'd like to welcome everyone to our Second Annual Yavapai Home Health and Lifestyle Expo. It's coming up Saturday, September 13th, and Sunday, the 14th, and it's a free public event at Tim's Toyota Center. Also, the third Thursday of this month, the 18th, we have another mixer at the Smoke Eye Museum on 147 North Arizona Street. As you may or may not know, Saturday, September 20th, is National Thank Police Officer Day. And we at the Chamber are participating, and we are collecting snack items to make up goodie bags for our officers, so they can take those in their patrol cars. So again, any goodies, please bring those down to the Chamber, and we'd be happy to help out with that. Now I have a list here of a few new members for this month. Arrowhead Lodge Recovery, Function by Design, Mode Transportation, the Prescott Chamber Orchestra, The Flooring Shack, Tri-City Singles, Pretty Canyon Railroad, Women's Council Realtors, and Yavapai Humane Society Thrift Store. Thank you.
You had a good month?
Yes, sir.
Good. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next presentation is by Mr. Jack Clevenger, having to do with the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act. So the podium is yours.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank anybody today here, and as a special for the Council and Mayor, for allowing us to be on the agenda today for this meeting. Then I also wanted to thank Patty Kraus for helping us, having an interpreter for the deaf, and that's Annalise. I'm sorry, the last name again?
Lancaster.
Manchester. So thank you for doing this for us. I'm going to try to go as slow as I can within the five minutes I have to present, get this presentation, which I think will enlighten this city as well as the Council, as to what this city can do to be able to enable those that are hard of hearing and those that are deaf to be also a part of this community. So thank you for coming, and I'm going to start this slide presentation. First of all, I thought there would be no better title for this presentation than to say that this wonderful city of Prescott is everybody's town, which is the slogan. But the thing is, everybody, meaning in two words, is everybody. So we have our symbol up here, and of course, we have our wonderful courthouse. Then again, the courthouse here. And then, as you see around the town, these banners are off the streets, it's everybody's hometown. And I've been here eight years, and to me, it's been a privilege to be part of this city. But there's a caveat here. It's not everybody's hometown for some people with disabilities. And I'm going to go into the reasons why. Because Prescott residents who have disabilities may need accommodations in order to participate in the meetings and events of everybody's hometown. That hometown being, which we all love, Prescott. There is a gap, G-A-P. That gap is people with disabilities, all kinds of disabilities. And we have some people representing agencies and organizations of other disabilities, and they may be speaking later. And the question is, how can they participate just like everyone else? And why should we care? And we're going to go into the reason why we should care. Out of 39,843 residents living in Prescott, it's easy to say that 17% of the, or that is 6,773 residents, have hearing loss from mild to severe. Second thing, most of those people with hearing loss were hearing aids. The third thing, some of these individuals are people who are deaf. And what that means is that, if the big D, deaf, is that they use sign language, or that is, ASL, American Sign Language, as their first language. That's how they communicate. As most of us probably are in this room, that fit into this category, one out of six baby boomers struggle with some hearing loss. And I'm not going to go to ask if any of you have hearing loss. You know yourself, if you have hearing loss, you know yourself when you have difficulty hearing, whether it be TV, in a restaurant, especially restaurants, such as a meeting like this, or maybe trying to watch a performance at the Yavapai College Performance Hall, or even at the Elks Opera House. So what does hearing loss look like? So I tried to come up with a few graphics that help illustrate what hearing loss is. The first one in the upper right-hand corner is where you have print that's a little bit harder to read. Impaired hearing looks like this. And you have to really focus to hear, see the words. Or you can have the captioning bubbles on the right, to where it's just a bunch of samples. In a conversation or in a meeting, that's what it looks like. It makes no sense at all. Or maybe in a restaurant, there's a very common setting in the lower left-hand corner, to where you see the person on the right has no clue what the other four people are talking about in a restaurant. One of the things about hearing loss is isolation, because they cannot participate in a conversation, they cannot participate in a meeting, they cannot participate in a way that others are able to enjoy, because they have enough hearing to be able to be involved. And I thought maybe use something to illustrate this. We have three guys walking down the beach, and the guy on the left is saying it's windy today. So the guy on the middle is saying, no, it's Thursday. He thought the guy on the left was saying it was Thursday, when he said it was Wednesday. He's saying, he thought he was saying Wednesday, instead he thought he was saying Thursday. You see what I'm saying? And then finally, I had to get right, and that's, this is the punchline, because the guy in the middle, he thought, the guy on the right thought he was saying that he was thirsty. So the guy on the right said, let's go have a beer. My wife is... So then we get into where we get what's called the big D, or they, those who are deaf. And that is what deafness looks like in a meeting without captioning, which we don't have here. But we do have an interpreter. If they didn't have an interpreter, all they're going to hear is blank. They may have some hearing, but basically, it's a total blank to them. But if they have an interpreter or captioning, then they'll be able to make out, for the most part, the words that's being said at the table or in a room, or such as a meeting hall that we have here today. So how can we, as persons with disabilities, participate in meetings and events in everybody's hometown? That's the big question mark. So how do we bridge the gap? The thing is, it's so graphically illustrates the isolation that I talked about and referred to just a moment ago. You have choir members, with the teacher, the choir director, giving everybody direction and trying to go during the music. But the person on the right can't be in a wheelchair, because he cannot get up the rises and so on, he's isolated. He's apart and separate, and therefore, not being able to really participate. So we have the honor and responsibility to include everyone in this great town of everybody's hometown, that is the City of Prescott. It's about inclusion of all the people in Prescott, including those with disabilities. So I got every, use puzzle pieces where we have people from all different backgrounds and persuasions and so on, all fitting in to be a part of this great city of Prescott. They are wanting to be a part of it at one time or another. And so we got to what's called the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. And that guarantees and says that people with disabilities have the right to be able to participate in public meetings, as well as in public settings. So Americans with Disabilities Act is enacted to establish clear and comprehensive representation of discrimination on the basis of disability. So I'm going to move on on that. And then, City of Prescott falls under Title II. And that ensures that programs, services, and activities operated by the city, as well as the state, that the people with disabilities can be able to participate. The accommodations, and that's where the key part comes in, is that to make accommodations for people with hearing loss, to make accommodations for people with vision loss or blindness, to make accommodation for mobility limitations. It's not only disability parking, but also having spaces available for a person in a wheelchair to be able to fit in somewhere in this room, so they can be able to be part of this meeting. And then, those that have psychological or psychiatric disabilities and other disabilities. So how can I participate as a person with disability? For hearing loss and deafness, it's real-time captioning. That's what you, if you're familiar with TVs, where you see captioning on the bottom of the screen, that's your captioning. It could be interpreters for the deaf, such as Annalise, who hears during class. It could be FM sessions, that is assistive listening devices. It could be TV captioning. And then, what's not often remembered is preferential seating. For a person with hearing loss or deafness, they need to be able to be up front, so they can see the speakers, they can see the interpreter for the deaf, and not way in the back, especially in a large performance hall, such as YC. And then, mobility limitation, that would be disability parking, space in a meeting room. And then other disparities, that's discussed with the ADA coordinator, such as, hopefully this city will have satisfied. Who already is doing it? For instance, the Azar Cardinals, they're having captioning at the stadium, which is amazing, on their jumbotron. The Harkins Theater has captioning, as well as assistive listening devices. Yavapai College recently started having captioning on a request. It's about the best picture show that's up on Joe Daley's. They have all FM sessions and captioning. What Prescott can learn from it is our city, here in the valley, and that is Prescott Valley. They have a website, they have an ADA coordinator, and they make it to a place where they want to request accommodation in the city of Prescott Valley. So the whole purpose of today is to heighten awareness of persons with disabilities. Two, is to initiate dialogue and create the amendment in action plan that is in your Prescott, to ensure that everybody with disabilities can be in fact part of everybody's hometown. So the recommendations, very important. First one is, city needs to have an ADA coordinator, when they're, ensure that people that request accommodations look better. Two, the city needs to have a clearly best record series for requesting those accommodations. Be sure for people requesting those accommodations on the city's website, as well as all published information materials. And then three, the city needs to have working assistive technology and services, such as assistive listening devices, captioning, interpreters, preferential seating. Then before, the city needs to enter into a contract under those vendors who are robbing ADA compliant, for instance, AV Services. Our ultimate goal is that to truly make Prescott everybody's hometown with an emphasis. Everybody's hometown, and that includes this town. This back. It's hard of hearing or deaf. Okay, here you go. Anyway, my name is Jack Clevenger. Here's my phone number, and there's my email address, if you'd like to ask more questions or if you need clarification or if you'd like a comment. And then, that's the end of my presentation. And if you have any questions and answers, if you have any, thank you for giving me the time to answer.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here. And now I understand that there was someone else that wanted to make a comment once you were complete.
Now they'll be answering right.
Okay. Yeah. Normally, we, on presentations, we only listen to the presentation, but take a couple of minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Carmen Green, and I'm the Deputy Director with the Arizona Commission for the Deaf and the Hard of Hearing. And I'll be reading a statement this afternoon from our Executive Director, Ms. Sherry Collins. "On behalf of the thousands of deaf and hard-of-hearing residents of Prescott and surrounding areas," forgive me, I'm going to slant just a little, because Commissioner Elizabeth Booth is with me today. She does not benefit from American Sign Language interpreting. She benefits from computer-assisted real-time transcription, which is similar to the captioning that Mr. Clevenger just spoke of. "On behalf of the thousands of deaf and hard-of-hearing residents of Prescott and surrounding areas, the commission is here today to voice support for the full inclusion of these individuals in civic life. The Americans with Disabilities Act, Title II, Covering State and Local Governments, requires government entities to provide reasonable accommodations to ensure effective communication for people with hearing loss. Additionally, the U.S. Department of Justice requires cities of certain sizes, such as Prescott, to have a designated ADA coordinator. Our State Commission holds many public meetings throughout the year across the state. We provide licensed American Sign Language interpreters, assistive listening systems, and cart captioning. Meetings are held at our state offices, have the additional benefit of being held in rooms with inductive loops that are installed. Upon request, we gladly provide tactile interpreters for individuals who are both deaf and blind. Materials in large print and/or braille, as well as certified deaf interpreters for individuals with limited English skills. All audiovisual materials produced by our commission include open captioning and American Sign Language. We do this not because it's the law, but because it is the right thing to do. Our agency serves over 800,000 Arizonans who have hearing loss, the largest disability group in Arizona. And we urge you to begin taking similar steps to include the entire Prescott community in civic life. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also brought some materials that I'll be happy to leave with you if you have additional questions later. Thank you very much."
Great. Any questions over here? Okay. Thanks for being here. Thanks, Jack. The, our management team will certainly follow this up, and we will have dialogue. And we certainly want Prescott to not be an outsider when it comes to doing the right thing. So thank you for being here. Okay, we'll move along. Mr. Arnold, we're going to talk about urban farming?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, howdy. My name's Thomas. I'm the guy with the donkey. And I've been a resident here for about 15 years. And I'm talking about urban farming, but I'm coming at it from like a pioneer family perspective, and as like an American, I reckon. So my family came here in the 1870s as farmers, and just a little over 100 years later, I'm still farming. And so I look at farming personally as an American right. And the right to sustainable food and healthy food is also is an American right. And right now in the world, if, I mean, I'm sure you're aware, but of, there's a lot of, urban farming is becoming like a major movement. It just hit National Geographic with one of eight articles. And urban farming is, do cities have enough food? If something, major catastrophe happened like Katrina, for example, most cities in the United States tested and came up with about three days. That's it. So Prescott's about three days, Seattle's about three days, something like that, which isn't a real comfortable number to me. But we already, you know, with Prescott already allowing, you know, two, we have two community gardens and very much, for the most part, a code that works with growing your own food in your backyard and things like that. But what I'm talking about is like, a little bit further beyond that, like actual food production. And what I'm also talking about is the health of our children. And with the rise in GMOs, simultaneous with the rise in ADHD, autism, Asperger's, all these things, we're like the only... all these things, we're like the only, we're one of the few countries in the whole world that has the same exact problems. The rise in GMOs, which is the rise in pesticides and herbicides, along with all these diseases. You don't see this in a lot of other places. And that, that's concerning to me, just as like, an American on my soil, that I defended as a veteran also, in the Gulf, in a four-year honorable discharge Marine, I feel like that I paid my dues, and feel like I should be able to eat healthy food, so on and so forth. So I, what I'm trying to do is come up with solutions. And I've been farming in the city here for about seven years, I've been a resident for about 15. And a big part of like, what I wanna push for is use of unused space, and providing not just like food for the, like, for the needy here or the poor in Prescott, it's easy to exist. You can eat six days a week for free. And that's all well and fine, but it's not good food. So it's almost like, when you're already down, but then you get, you're eating poor food, that's what the poor people get. You know, there's a tiny percentage of people who can afford the farmer's market, even with WIC. And even worse at, you know, New Frontiers or Natural Grocery, I mean, these products are very expensive. And the fact of the matter is, we could grow a good percentage of them. And we have a beautiful climate, and we have tons of space, and there's a lot of cities right now, internationally and nationally, pushing for it. Not just like supporting it, but like in Canada, for example, they're giving tax breaks, they're giving rebates on water catchment, tax breaks if you're developing open spaces in the city limits and growing food, to start businesses for farm-to-restaurant, vocational training as farmers. And urban farming itself is becoming this huge movement. I mean, it's been in the country since 1897 in Philadelphia. We've, urban farming is even before the Victory Gardens and that whole, that whole deal. So this is a very old and normal thing, and it's just a short period of time that we've forgotten. And so, what I, after my, being here this long, and trying to run away a few times, even once to Mexico, I realized that this is where I'm at, and I love it here. And I can produce food in Prescott, and I'm almost 90% off the farm. I've done one year at 90%, and that's, that's everything. Milk, meat, eggs, and, you know, if I can do it, anyone can do it. It's the other issue is, urban farming as a focal point for community development is normal in a lot of places, and I think it's behoof the city of Prescott to start thinking of urban farming and urban food production as a part of city development and city planning. Just 'cause I think there's a lot of business opportunities with restaurants to farm, like farm-to-restaurant type thing, and like, even cities like St. Louis, I think St. Louis is at 10 farm-to-restaurant farms, all within the city limits. So it's almost zero carbon footprint for food. And there's enough health-conscious people in this town that it would work. It would go. And it's hard to get that across with the convenience of ordering from big companies and so on and so forth. The other benefit of urban farming is that it brings awareness to us and our children and our city as to what our ecosystem in the city actually is. You know, when you're in a place like Prescott, where it's so beautiful already, and we're surrounded by national forest, it's hard to remember that we are actually still in an ecosystem, right here downtown. And so, all the things that go into our soil, into our air, into our water, are all accumulating into toxins, and like, we've had issues with the lakes. And so, a lot of that start, that stuff starts upstream. And so, as a farmer, it's concerning to know that, you know, for the example, the use of pesticides and herbicides. And I think that farming would be, urban farming is a viable solution to ecological issues that are pending, or not yet talked about yet, in a city like this. If we really get into it, you know, there's a lot of like, bad stuff going in, you know, and I actually brought a handout here, I'll pass out before I leave, in a card. But on the chemical, these are just the chemicals that are used in the, then the herbicides underneath the power lines. Which, you know, is concerning, 'cause as a goat man, I graze my goats under most of the power lines in this town. And I know them all, and I left for one season, and I noticed a lot of them were toxic at this point. And so, I started doing some research, and did research on other cities and other places. And there's a lot of, lot of other governments, city governments, working on a greener approach, just because of all these harsh chemicals that are, you know, they're all, they're all around us right now, unfortunately. And we're paying for them as taxpayers, which I don't think is, is really that good. But if taxpayers had a, didn't have to pay for that, and we paid for it, we took care of the invasive species or the weeds with natural, age-old elements like goats, and they produce milk, and so on and so forth, it just makes sense. And I'm sure goats are a heck of a lot cheaper than a lot of these chemicals, and the companies we contract to spray them. And so, what I'm just, is kinda, I'm getting involved, I mean, I've been involved, but this is my first push with the city, to push for like, urban farming as a planning point, and also as like, from requests from a lot of different people. You know, I'm not just up here because I think it's a good idea, as I talk to like, everyone, I talk to a lot of people in town, to say the least. And so, everyone's like, yeah, you know, we should be doing this. I can't afford the farmer's market, I can't afford New Frontiers, I don't wanna go out 'cause I have all these food sensitivities, or my kids, I don't want them to eat GMO food sprayed with stuff that's gonna give them autism. And who does? And so, for me, coming in as a farmer and a veteran, who was already exposed to chemical warfare, and probably sterile, due to my exposure in the Gulf, and I was on the Iraqi border with live rounds, and I was exposed to that stuff, and I volunteered for it. I mean, ignorant, of course, at 19. But so, it's a sensitive subject for me, that now that when I have my right to be back on my soil to grow my food, someone's spraying stuff right behind my house. And so, you know, there's, it's like, it's like personal, almost. It is personal, I should say. And so, that's where I'm kinda coming at it, you know, is from of like, a personal and a historic perspective, of like, an American, you know, just another American that wants to live right, and willing to work hard to do so. And, and so, I have, I have more down the line to present and talk about, but this is just kinda like my intro to like, what I'm trying to do. And before I go, I'll give you a copy of a chemical data sheet that we put together with my company, called Shades of Green Agroecology and Ecological Restoration. And that's ecological restoration at like, a residential level is what I'm working on. There's a lot of ecological restoration at, on large scales, and what I'm trying to think of is ecological restoration for the average resident with the average income, so that everyone can afford a cleaner lifestyle. And Prescott, as beautiful as it is, you know, inadvertently will get spoiled if we continue to not heed these warnings of ecological, you know, we're screwing it up, basically. And it's just too beautiful of a place to let go. So, yeah, I just wanted to be brief and to the point. But, yeah, my name's Thomas. Thank you.
If you'd like to give the material to the clerk, and she'll disturb it.
Thanks, Thomas.
Any question from, from Mr. Arnold, while he's here?
I got one comment.
Yeah.
You know, to me, there'd be a perfect place for that, and that's down where the Prescott Creeks have their office now. That property's been there probably for the last 25 years, along that creek bed.
The new office?
The new office, sitting vacant. 10 acres, where water could be taken out of Granite Creek, irrigated with all your farming stuff, and put back in the creek, as well as filtering the water. I would suggest maybe you talk to the owner about a short-term lease at no charge to plant your garden down there, and have water at hand, plus purifying the water that goes into Granite Creek.
Absolutely, that's a great idea.
Yeah. The property's for sale now, Steve, but they might be interested.
Yeah, it's been sitting there for, you know, as long as that sawmill's been gone, and I think that's probably close to 30 or 40 years. So 30 or 40 years full of vegetable production would be good.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had a comment there. Number one, thank you for your service to the country, for doing things that I couldn't do for myself. I appreciate who you are. Number two, I'm sure that there's an opportunity for dialogue on how to incorporate some of your conversation with some of the pieces of open space that the city has preserved for various different things. Number one, I like goat cheese, I like goat milk, and I think that's a good way to manage vegetation, too. So, I think there's opportunities. Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, you know, my wife and my doctor are pointing out that I'm a victim of self-inflicted wounds from high fructose corn syrup, you know. Went looking for it barbecue sauce the other day, it was in everything. Finally found some stuff that was really good down on the square this weekend. Charlie made me buy it. But in World War II, we had a lot of success with kinda what you're talking about with the Victory Gardens, and they did that. How do you convince the people, 'cause the people can start doing what you're talking about right now, but they choose not to because it's easy. And true, if Safeway and Fry's went down, we'd be in a lot of trouble. You know, if the stuff they're selling stays in, we'll be in trouble in the future. What you're saying's exactly right. How do you, and my wife, she's like a little prairie home companion, too. She knows how to preserve food, and that's, like you were talking about, we've lost it so fast. And no one hardly knows how to can food anymore, which is what makes you last through real hard times or disasters. How do you convince people to pick that up and start doing that again?
Well, what I've been doing is, you know, for years, I've been volunteering with the school system, getting the youth, trying to get the youth involved. And, you know, I've finally made some headway, and I have a farm club and, at North Point Academy. And, you know, 'cause there is school, for example, that, I think that getting the youth involved in, into the educational system is key. But like, we're, you know, with Prescott's kinda starting the farm-to-school thing, the movement where farmers can start bringing their stuff to schools, well, it doesn't count for these smaller charter-type schools. So what I've been doing is trying to, we're just making school as farm. And so, we're turning our campus there into a functional farm, and the kids are the farm managers. You know, I'm just the guide. And that's one way that I think. Another way that I think that we can get this across is through like, literally like, if the city is supporting it openly, not just like, yeah, you can grow your own garden, but like, hey, what's, like, pushing for it, like, how are we doing as a city here? You know, that's kinda what I'm exploring, is how do I get it out there so people believe it's legitimate? I think it needs to be in the public's face more. And I'm not sure that, how that goes, but like, if we had a public space, like Steve was talking about, then it's like, well, then if it's there, people start to see, like, wow. And we're pushing for it, just like the community gardens push, but, you know, and here we have our community gardens aren't quite full, whereas in like, Canada, there's people on two-year waiting lists. Like, what's the difference in some of these cities? Like, why are there so many people? They have like, a gazillion community gardens in these places, and they can't, they're filling up so fast. And so, I don't know, maybe it's just like a, I don't know how the city, like with Water Smart, like the little pamphlets and things like that. Like, I think that's a good way, at first, is get people involved, like, what are we feeding our kids? What kind of products are in the stores? You know, the same stuff that's in like, GMO foods is glyphosate, glyphosate is the main bad guy chemical. So, it's in Roundup, it's in Walmart, it's in True Value, it's everywhere. I mean, that'd be one thing, is starting to look at our products as a city, and like, what are we selling? And thinking about, 'cause there are green alternatives and stuff like that. But I think it's like an educational push, and that's one thing I'm willing to work on. And then also, as far as like, like with new developments and things like that, like, talking to developers about like, have you thought about incorporating some kind of garden spaces into your developments? Coming in, and this is happening other places, I mean, they're giving them tax breaks in Canada, 'cause...
Thank you for bringing that up, and the fact that we're looking at the Unified Development Code now, and by statute or regulation, whatever you choose to call it, we require somebody to develop on their private property, they turn so much of their private property into open space.
Absolutely.
So that'd be something to look at. Thank you.
Exactly.
I just wanna say thanks, Thomas. And, by the way, your goats do wonderful in my creek area there, so. This is just the beginning of the conversation, and I'm glad you came and gave us this presentation.
Thank you.
Jane?
Yeah, I wanna thank you too, Thomas. Your presentation was great. We have a lot of wasted land in Prescott that may not be immediately noticeable because it's in small pieces. And what I like about what you're trying to do is make good use of that land, turn it into something that's productive, looks nice. People work together to make it look good. I live in a community where we are urban farmers. We raise chickens, and we have a community garden. We harvest rainwater to water the garden, and we work together. None of us are as young as the people I see in the audience with you. And I know that people who are 60 and over can do this easily if they work together. So I think it's a wonderful idea, and thank you for bringing it to the council.
Tom, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You see there's interest. Okay. Okay, moving along to discussion items. Our first item today is by our police chief concerning the ICMA recommendation. Thanks, chief.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Certainly my pleasure to present to you the first progress report on the ICMA study and recommendations, and forgive me, I believe I may have touched the wrong button there. Sorry, Mark. We've broken it up into several sections. The first section is called Tier One Recommendations. These are recommendations out of the 41 recommendations that are in the report. These are recommendations that your command group at the police department and other internal sources have had much discussion about, and it made sense for us to either immediately, or in the very near future, research and potentially implement these recommendations into our operation. And mayor, with your permission, I'll just read through them, and if any questions come up, please just stop me at that point.
You want them at the time?
Sure.
Questions, you want them at the time?
Yes, sir, that'd be fine, mayor, if it's acceptable with you. The Tier One Recommendations include shift schedules for patrol squads, mainly to address the overlaps that were identified in the research conducted by the ICMA consultant, and we're very interested in peak calls for service times, case management and supervision, how our cases are tracked throughout the organization, a greater focus on accident prevention, the development of social media policy, and again, the goal there is to foster better communication with the public, security video system for property and evidence, and external and internal audits that would take place inside the organization. Additional Tier One Recommendations include...
Question, chief?
Yes, sir.
Since you said it's okay to interrupt you, conduct internal, external audits, how often?
It depends on what we're auditing. For example, one of the audits that we're interested in implementing right away is on our evidence and property room, and that could be done monthly or quarterly, and it would be done, we also may wanna consider not doing it on a set time schedule, make it sporadic. So that, that's an example of one, that would have maybe multiple timeframes.
Thank you for your comment. It's understandable, after what we just went through with our study, or with the recommendations, that maybe there's some things that we needed to do on a more regular basis, and once every 10 years. Thank you.
The additional Tier One Recommendations include the next-generation 911 conversion, and the immediate need to begin looking at that. We believe that'll be imposed upon us within the next three to five years, and we did get some good news on that, and I'll report on that on our budget piece here in just a moment. Taking a look at our take-home vehicle policy, the city, of course, has a vehicle policy and travel policy, but since we do have a number of vehicles that are assigned to individuals, it made sense that we wanna tighten our own policy on that. And then on the training coordinator, a number of recommendations were included on our training coordination function. Those included more interactive role-playing type training scenarios, roll-call trainings, the consolidation of training records, and the assignment of background investigations so that they all didn't fall on one individual, which created a backlog, and then additional MDT, which is the mobile computer in the cars, training following field training of our officers, so that they had a more enhanced skill set there. A number of these are in place already. August, a couple of weeks ago, we changed our training coordinator from a sworn police officer, put that police officer back on the street, and we now have a civilian that is managing our training recruiting function. And so, we believe that move will address many of these as well. And then, some of these we're already doing, as far as like, the interactive role training. We do active shooter training on a regular basis in the city of Prescott. On the Tier Two Recommendations, these are recommendations that we're not ready to implement. Continued discussion on many of these will take place, but we're also not ready to discard them either. They may still make sense at some point in the future. There's a couple on here that are related. The first one is the response by the Prescott Police Department to non-emergency calls for service. The recommendation was to create a working group to look at that. And then the fourth one down talks about the creation of a work group to examine calls for service handled by the Prescott Police Department. Those two are related, and one of our concerns and continued discussion is that our community has an expectation of a service level, and we're not ready to abandon that without much conversation with our community and with stakeholders outside the department. The other recommendation that's Tier Two is a special enforcement team that would supplement investigations, crime prevention, and community engagement. We believe in a lot of ways, we're doing this already with the bike patrol unit and with other segments of our department, so we're not certain... So we're not certain that, uh, this recommendation is an immediate need, but, um, we like the idea that it could be used in the future. The reassignment of the traffic unit to patrol, a lot of ways this makes sense as a uniform, uh, part of our operation, that we would have all the uniform components together. But at the same time, we believe the traffic unit is working very well in its present form and we're not exactly anxious to move that at this present time. And then on the bottom, a creation of a special enforcement unit for proactive enforcement. And again, we believe that we are addressing that to a certain degree with units that are in existence.
Comment?
Chief. Um, just as a layman here, uh, reassignment of traffic to patrol. I, I take it that patrol has a designated area where traffic has a specific duty, but they're all would be uniform patrol officers, correct?
Yep. Mayor, uh, council member, that is correct. They're, they're all sworn police officers. The traffic as a unit, uh, the, the officers that are assigned to the traffic unit are the motor officers and they're currently assigned under Lieutenant Morley in the Special Operations Unit. They are readily available should the patrol commander Lieutenant Gill request assistance. And they routinely supplement the, the patrol beats by handling the accidents that are occurring during a patrol shift. So they work hand and glove, they're just assigned in a different area.
And when you do this, uh, because really they do, they free up the patrol guys to go back to their, their beat. Because the traffic guys show up and they finish the reports. That's correct, isn't it?
Mayor, council member, that, that is correct and, and they have an expertise when it comes to the fatal accidents and the very serious accidents. They bring an expertise to the table so that those accidents, we ensure a, a quality investigation, uh, for, for those type of incidents that occur.
Cause it seems like they're already assigned to patrol in a way.
Yes, sir. Mayor, council member, that's correct. And they do handle calls for service when patrol is sworn.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Question, Chief, if I may. At one point in time in a different council, in a different period in time, I think Mr. Lamerson was on that council, uh, in a past city manager's world, we had requested and received a special enforcement team. Several years ago, I think Andy was here. And that enforcement team dealt with vagrants, dealt with, um, drugs, alcohol, uh, prostitution, those kinds of things in our parks was very successful. There were three of them along with a lieutenant and due to the fact that we were down, uh, officers, that group was dismantled and put back on the street. Uh, if we went back in the time when Randy Oaks was the chief and if people would share the, the correct numbers, that group, single-handedly, put a lot of folks in jail. Uh, do you ever see a part in time in this world that you're in now as chief, bringing that group back to deal with some of those issues?
Mayor, council member Blair, um, it's certainly under discussion, but one of the things we have going for us at this current time is we have a sergeant and a detective assigned to the regional narcotics effort. And even though they work countywide, we have the ability upon request to ask for greater focus in certain areas. The other thing we have going for us is we have a detective assigned to the state gang task force. They have been able to bring a whole group of resources together, even though we only have one assigned, upon request to address hotspot areas in our community. And they regularly come in when certain events may trigger the presence of, um, of violent individuals or, or gang members in our community. So we do have both of those elements going for us at this current time.
So it sounds like to me that that focus may not be gone, but may be expanded, but just in different areas.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank, thank you. Uh, just a comment on your conversation there, Chief. Um, at the timeframe that, uh, Councilman Blair was referring to, different time, we had a lot of different things at that time. One of them was a lot of money. Today we don't. And, um, we're working to try and come up with a different mechanism in which the city can provide revenue to fund or help fund, uh, public safety. Um, we should be having a meeting here really quick, uh, sometime in the middle of the month, I believe, with Senator Pearson, representative from the governor, to discuss a couple of issues. Um, fact of the matter is, I appreciate the hard work all of our guys and gals do in the police department with the limited resources that we've had. But we're also a community that's been a, um, I don't want to use the word victim when I'm talking to police, but, um, it's hard to retain good qualified officers when in a free market system, you can't compete with the dollars you have because you're so sales ta-, tax dependent. And, uh, it's just not sustainable. So, just so you understand, we are looking at some other things that we can look at. And I would keep that line of thought, uh, on your mind as, as we go forward.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, thank you. Uh, several of the recommendations we believe are completed. Uh, the minimum staffing, the recommendation was to maintain five and a supervisor. Uh, we, we are there. We, we always have a minimum of five uniformed officers and a supervisor on duty within the city of Prescott and many, many times we have additional resources besides those. Uh, the multi-agency team approach to find solutions reference community residence issues. Uh, that actually originated out of the city manager's office and we believe it's functioning very well. Thank you, Mayor and Council for your support in bringing on a full-time code enforcement, uh, person. Uh, this individual has established relationships with the community residence, uh, agencies and association. And we believe that solutions are being developed, uh, as we move forward. So this, um, this multi-agency team, uh, made up of many city departments and other community members, including, uh, council members, uh, it is meeting regularly and moving forward. Uh, the intelligence and crime analysis function, at the time the consultants were here, we had a position to, to, uh, handle crime analysis. It was a vacant position. And we didn't fill that vacancy until after the consultant report came out. So we currently have a crime analysis function. We are getting regular reports and we can make requests for additional analysis on a regular basis. So we believe this function is moving well. Uh, the bike unit was transferred to the patrol division. They'll maintain all of their responsibilities and duties when it comes to downtown patrol and, uh, specific assignments. Uh, and we do have grant requirements with this unit. They answer to a different patrol, uh, the patrol commander now instead of the special operations commander. That made sense to us. Uh, they are a resource enhancer for the on-duty squads. And so we just thought that was a, an alignment we could do right away. That transfer took place August 31st. Uh, the maintenance of the current beat configurations, uh, we have no, uh, desire at this time to change beat configurations. We believe the way the beats are lined up with our calls for service makes sense to us and we'll continue to operate those. And then the ongoing training and interaction with the mentally ill, drug addiction and bias-based policing, those were areas that we were looking at based on what's been going on kind of nationally, the city of Phoenix most recently, and our own incidents here in Prescott. Um, our officers respond to calls involving those suffering with mental illness on a regular basis. We respond to, to calls for service from individuals that are contemplating suicide and are in need of assistance. And so we are, um, providing additional training and discussions with the mental health providers in our community for additional dialogue. We, we need to be the master of those resources so that individuals struggling can get into treatment and help. And we're certainly excited about moving forward in that direction.
Hey, Chief, uh, on the transfer of the bike unit to patrol, is that in addition to the five and the one? Or is that part of the five and the one?
Uh, no, they, they will not be a part of the patrol squad. That'll still be five and one, but then the bike officers would be out there in addition to those. Yes, sir.
I have a question. I haven't seen it on your report. Maybe I'm missing it. When you get to the budget and capital section, based upon all the things that are happening out in the country and the world today, the safety of the police officers in my mind are first and foremost. Has there been any, any discussion on outfitting each officer with a body camera to better protect our police officers from the situations that seem to be taking place in the country?
Yeah. Mayor, council member Blair, thank you for that. Uh, and our deputy chief, Andy Reinhardt, is currently researching that and, and we have great interest in, um, uh, bringing body cameras on, onto the department and, and at least in the experimental stage. Um, interested officers who may want to wear and, and we begin to test that. As the Phoenix Police Chief pointed out in a, in an interview, the cost for that isn't so much the camera, it's the data storage. Once we go down that path, we'll be required to retain all of that data. And, um, they're, they're still working out how that would all look. But yes, we're very interested in that.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Isn't that budgeted for 16? Isn't that projected in 16 budget? I, I don't remember what it was. I think, I think it's somewhere in there, but I.
It's available for grant funding this year and then looking, looking to be budgeted for next year.
That's right. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Uh, in going through the recommendations, um, pleased to see that, uh, there was really only a handful that may have, uh, a budget impact on us. Uh, the social media policy development, there's great interest in best practice around the country that, you know, we as a police department should have Facebook, a Twitter account and, and all these various aspects of social media. What we're seeing with our peers of equal size is that they typically have a body associated with that. Our current PIO, um, capabilities involve Lieutenant Morley handling the requests from the media as he can. And then of course, uh, using the city's PIO resources has been very helpful to us. But if we should develop a policy that allows us or promotes Facebook and Twitter, uh, we may have to, you know, consider part-time or full-time position to, to begin to address that, uh, to make sure that we, we keep up with it. Uh, the, once we start that, there, there'll be an expectation from the public that it's maintained. Uh, property and evidence video security system, that would involve the installation of, of cameras in three different locations, uh, of our operation to, and then of course, the monitoring that goes along with that. Uh, desktop scanner, I believe we, um, for about $750, we can get a high-quality scanner that would meet the needs of this recommendation. And then our next generation 911, uh, at one point, believe that would involve significant upgrades to our CAD and our software at the, uh, Prescott Regional Communications Center. Uh, found out just this past week from the state 911 office, that they actually absorb maybe 90% of the cost of that entire rollout. So over the next few years, as we move down the next generation 911 path, uh, the state will step in according to their reps this week and they'll absorb, uh, the vast majority of the costs there. So that was really good news for us, um, this, this week.
Uh, Chief, question. Um, the council has deferred impact fees on police, uh, services as a result of new growth. Are any of these capital items something that we could attribute or justify impact fees? Or maybe Mr. McConnell could answer that one.
I think the answer, the short answer is no, they're not really. If, if you look at the capital improvement projects, which were in the impact fee study, there are things like expansion of the police department facility and so forth. Um, the items which the chief has up on the screen, which are being, um, discussed here really are of a much smaller scale and some of them are, are not going to be eligible as capital facilities.
Is there any other point in time at which we're going to reconsider, um, impact fees for the police department? And, and look at what other capital needs outside of the study?
Outside of which study?
Outside of the ICMA study, yeah.
Well, um, as we discussed before, um, we will be back before the council on December 9th to talk about the impact fees and certainly, um, that need not be the only discussion between now and December 9th. Um, we can, we can have that discussion, uh, if the council would like to do that.
And finally, uh, Mayor and council members, uh, there were several recommendations that in discussion, uh, with the command group, um, we do not, we do not wish to pursue at this time. Uh, one of the recommendations was to reduce the number of personnel assigned to the traffic unit. Their recommendation was to cut the unit by half. And what we felt in looking at the recommendation and discussion was that the consultant may not have clearly understood the number of additional duties that our traffic unit actually performs. Uh, throughout the course of the year, this unit is responsible for the smooth operation and, uh, traffic flow of the many events and activities that take place in our community. And a new one that just came about this past year that I'll, I'll, I'll point to as an example was the Martin Luther King, uh, Jr. March from Prescott College to downtown. Uh, our entire traffic unit was on that. It was estimated by the organizers to be a very, very small gathering of less than 50 people. Uh, I believe there were over 300 that showed up for that march. And, uh, we received a lot of compliments from the marchers about, uh, the way the traffic unit handled that. Um, but we also did not get into any jams on traffic that, you know, the, the citizens were able to move about freely. The marchers were able to move about freely. That comes from well-trained officers who know how to manage traffic. And that's just one example of the many functions that our traffic unit performs in addition to the participation on DUI task force, on, um, impairment, other enforcement activities, both on a training preventive scale and on regular, uh, enforcement duties of speed, which we get, uh, from various, um, HOAs around the city requesting these officers participate in, in, uh, traffic calming in their neighborhoods. Um, we just did, we just didn't want to go there. We, we believe the unit is functioning well and we wanted to maintain it.
Jim had something.
Yeah, Chief, thank you. Thank you for recognizing the fact that, uh, the fellows that were here doing the study don't live here. They live in New York or they live in Boston or they live somewhere else. And our boots on the ground see it a little differently and traffic is an issue. Um, you know, by census, Prescott's short on 40,000 people. You guys are having to deal with well over 120,000 people. Estimated to be 380,000, um, by, by projections by, uh, year 2020. So we have a relatively small squad of folks that are having to do a whole lot and you guys are doing it wonderfully with what resources you have. Our task is to try and figure out how to benefit our police and fire folks and everybody else, not just you guys, but the roads. Look at the amount of traffic that our roads are handling. That's far and beyond the 38,000 people that live in Prescott. So we're trying to take a look at all of it.
Thank you.
Charlie.
Hey, Mayor, thank you. And Chief, I know there's still three bullet points, but the light started lighting up, so. Um, I just wanted to take a, a moment. One of the areas that we haven't touched on in here, and I think from my perspective of reading the report, certainly you all are taking the ones that are priorities and the ones that don't necessarily fit our community and going through those. But the internal issues that were identified in the survey and, and some of the feedback that was there, how are those steps going in implementing some changes to improve communication and, and things of that nature?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Ronald, um, you're speaking specifically to pay and benefits?
Not necessarily pay and benefits, but the, whether it's the reality or the perceived disconnect in communication from city hall to, you know, the boots on the ground and the internal communication with the sworn officers and things of that nature.
Yes, sir. Um, we personally, I meet with staff, um, try to get to the briefing. So whenever there's a significant change that would take place, um, try to do that in person as opposed to an electronic communication. Most recently, our city manager and HR director were, were in my building, meeting with my staff face-to-face uh, on an important topic that was coming down the pike. I believe these can continue and, and increase as we move on, especially in, in light of the recommendation, maybe to create some kind of a leadership team. In discussion with my command group, one of the things we'll look to identify are the informal leaders within the organization. And, and maybe have those open communications with the informal leadership on a, on a more regular basis and not in a staff setting, maybe on a private setting. Um, in, in looking at the, um, the overall survey of staff, much of the communication does center around, uh, pay and benefits. But we, as many other communities around the state, um, we all fell in that same boat where, you know, pay raises weren't available, um, different benefits were looked at being tweaked, uh, to meet financial obligations. And, uh, I believe many of the staff do realize that we are emerging out of that, but we're emerging out of that slowly. So, uh, I think the ongoing communication and just the open door, uh, policy of, of confidential communication that's in place needs to continue. But, um, other than that, council member, uh, we'll continue to work with my command group on, on other alternatives and ideas to address that.
And I appreciate it. It's just, it's an area from the report that I definitely took note of and I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of some of those issues when we're looking at the structure and our responses and things of that nature. So thank you very much, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Jane.
Uh, I'd like to go back to the traffic unit for a minute. Uh, several weeks ago, there was an article in the Courier about the, um, locations in the city where we have the heaviest incidence of traffic accidents and fatalities. And one of those is Prescott Lake, Lakes Parkway and, and Highway 69. Highway 69 is heavily traveled by both residents who are familiar with the road and tourists who are not.
Right.
Um, some weeks ago, we had a fatal accident on 69, near Prescott Lakes Parkway that shut down Highway 69. down Highway 69 for several hours. And there was a lot of confusion about where to be, where to go. So, my question is, which agencies respond to those accidents? Who's in charge? And is there a traffic diversion plan that is understood by all officers on the ground?
Mayor, Councilwoman Wilcox, fair question. Those are case-by-case incidents that are challenging based on the type of accident, the type of scene the officers are dealing with, and the immediate need for traffic flow versus quality and comprehensive investigation. Real quick example, last week, I was trying to get home to Perkins Drive, and the accident on 89, my motors were blocking all traffic going on 89 in the afternoon from the Parkway. So, I went up to Willow Creek thinking I could drive over that. Well, there's a deputy there blocking traffic there, so I'm thinking, I can't get home. And in my house, I could've got to my house before the accident. Well, then I began to think, and okay, wait a minute, now we've got an airport, how many travel plans are we going to interfere with when we could've blocked traffic at the intersection ahead? And what had happened there was a coordination between, it was an Arizona Highway Department of Public Safety accident with assistance from Prescott Police Department and the Sheriff's Office. And so, there needs to be a greater coordination on those type. And I think as we do that, what we need to signal to our staff is to consider the impact and make every effort possible to reduce that impact. And, you know, in that sense, I'm so thankful that we don't have I-17 or an I-10 running through our community because we've all seen the backups that occur on those highway systems when there's an accident, and the investigation demands the full control of the road. We will continue to work with our staff to try to minimize that as it occurs.
And I assume that you periodically get together with the other law enforcement agencies to debrief and look at those situations that have become confusing to the public?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And we also work with our own traffic engineer on those type of issues, just to see, is there a design issue that can be addressed in addition to a control issue?
Right.
And, you know, Chief, you know, if, I think on our part as a council and representatives, we just gotta keep updating the roads to handle the loads that's on there, and a lot of this stuff is underway. You know, right where that accident was, they're widening it to four lanes divided. If that would've been in place, we would've never had that head-on collision. That happened because someone drifted into the other lane and they hit each other. You know, up on 69, that study's underway already because we know it's a problem, we know it's confusing. So, it's getting redesigned to be six lanes going all the way through. There's even discussions now on I-17, can there be simpler solutions than a complete huge bypass? Can we have simpler, low-cost ways to move that around? So, I think these guys are going to try and hold it together as best they can, but really, as governments, we need to keep our roads up to handle the load of traffic that's coming along. And I think we could work a lot better with other agencies because really, it kinda shocked us that the tribe widened out to six lanes, and we weren't, this should've been one huge project doing it together, and we could've got it done. So, you know, thanks for everything you guys are doing to keep it together, but we're trying to do things on another level that I think a lot of the public doesn't know because it takes so doggone long and so stinking huge pile of money to get these road projects done, but it's underway.
Mayor, thank you. And Councilmember, one more point on that. The very first Tier One, the third bullet point on there, was the reduction of being more preventive on traffic accidents. So, that was a recommendation that we've asked our traffic unit to begin to. They provide us the numbers of accidents, but what Deputy Chief and I have wanted to see now is, okay, what can we do in these areas that are constantly producing accidents? So, we are trying, we are going to look to be proactive in those areas, at least with trying to come up with a solution. And that will involve the use of our traffic engineer, it will involve the use of our partners in the Arizona Highway Department of Public Safety, you have a Pike County and the other agencies. The other recommendations that we do not want to pursue is, one is the bunker storage facility. This facility is serving our needs well, it's in an ideal location, and at this point, it doesn't make any sense to us at all to move that facility. Property and evidence unit to administrative services. We realize this is a best practice around the nation for departments that have a property function that is independent of investigations. Currently, our property people are also tied to investigations as crime scene technicians. We are joined at the hip. So, at this time, we don't want to move that unit. At some point in the future where it makes sense for us to have an independent property function and an independent crime scene function, then it would make sense to move it, but we're not there yet. But at some point in the future, that may be something we would want to reapproach Mayor and Council with for additional discussion. And then, finally, our training coordinator to review use of force and pursuits as a matter of recommendation for changes. Currently, our commanders, our supervisors, the deputy chief and I, we review those use of force reports, we review pursuit reports, and those changes are recommended at the supervisory, all levels of supervision. Our training coordinator's a civilian, not that they may not have great ideas about change, but this, these type of reports here are very technical, they will involve policy issues, they may involve discipline issues, and so, they are reviewed at a different level than the training coordinator. So, we're not going to pursue that recommendation at this time. Are there any additional questions? The last few documents are not on the slideshow, but this is just, we wanted to show you the tools.
You made one comment, I just want to reiterate the fact of how important I think body cameras are. When you start alluding to the review of use of force, I believe when you have the body cameras on, that goes both ways, whether it's an officer over abusing his power or someone else abusing their power towards the officer. And I think it's an equal playing field, and it minimizes both of those and neutralizes both of those attitudes when they know that's being filmed. So, I suggest the quicker we can get body cams on, the better off we'll be.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilmember. These are provided to you to show you the tools that are being used to track the recommendations, who's responsible, what kind of timelines may be imposed. And then, the final document is an individual tool that each recommendation will have a status report document assigned to it, and that way, we've got complete tracking on each and every recommendation that was made by the ICMA. And for all the different reasons, we either implemented it, we've put it on hold, or we've chosen not to implement it. That will all be on a single document available for review.
That it?
Yes, sir.
One comment. Council's role in the spending the money for the ICMA to come and take a look at it. Our role was to appropriate the money. I think they did a good job. Now, we have to depend on the city manager and you and your staff to implement those things that make sense to you. But our location, our police department's very different than some of the ones that they normally look at. So, I have all confidence that you're moving in the right direction, and you and our management team, as a team, will do everything possible. But if it's a money matter, ultimately, that's our responsibility. So, thanks for what you're doing. I think you're moving well, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it.
I have a question, if I may, Mayor. One quick question. You know, we start talking about drug seizure and all the things that go on within Yavapai County. Can you briefly explain to me what share, what proportionate share the city of Prescott receives of RICO money, and how far does that go to accomplish our budget mission statement?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Councilmember Blair, currently, the RICO dollars are managed in a joint account through the county attorney's office. And routinely, we'll make requests at a PAMP meeting, which is all the partners gathered together for dollars for a specific project. And then, here in the very near future, we have a disbursement of a set amount that'll come back to us based on the overall balance in the account. We also benefit from those dollars in the payment of Sergeant Perlock's salary, our PAMP detective salary, and then, the overtime with our Git'em detective is paid out of that as well. So, overall, we benefit greatly by a significant amount of dollars on an annual basis through RICO. And then, on an as-needed basis, we can request dollars in that joint request, and the PAMP members all vote on that. And that has worked well for us. Our next disbursement is due to be within the next few weeks. $28,000 check we'll receive from the county attorney's office that will come to us.
Thank you for explaining that. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Chief, I think Jim and the mayor kind of said this too, but I want to put it in as well. Thanks for not just blindly implementing all these recommendations, but viewing this study as a tool, which I think is what we hope for it to get. And, you know, moving forward, we can maybe do some other things, but it is our department, so we need to do what's right for us. And sometimes, the outsiders will have good ideas, but they may not know us specifically. So, thanks for viewing this as a tool.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, moving along.
Mayor, could I ask a favor, please? Could we do the boards and commissions and League of Cities update? I have a personal commitment at 4:45 that I'm going to have to leave for.
Okay.
If that wouldn't be okay?
Henry, can you live with it for 15 minutes? Not forget what you're going to tell us? Okay. Let's go.
Great. So, Mayor, if, with your permission, I'd like to give a brief update, and I know there's three of us that attended the League Conference and wanted to provide some information back to the council about some of the things that we learned and some of the activities that took place. And then, as far as I'm concerned, I don't have any board or commission updates that need to come to the council. It's been fairly quiet there. But as you're aware, Councilwoman Wilcox, Kuknio, and I attended the League Conference down in Phoenix two weeks ago, and we had not gone the year prior, so this was a good opportunity for us to come and meet with a multitude of folks from all over the state. Our very first day, the very first meeting we attended was the Public Safety Retirement System, PSPRS, update. Unlike years previous, this actually provided a very fruitful discussion and a lot of information. We do have about 100 pages of PowerPoint slides, if any of the council members would like to see it. Patty has a hard copy, basically providing an update about the status of the fund. What was interesting, though, is that of everybody in attendance, we were the only city that started asking questions of the folks that were presenting. You know, that was just a very interesting observation from that meeting. But one of the things that came from that update is that there's an openness from the staff at the retirement system to meet with our staff, if it's our desire, to look at options and discuss things specific to the city of Prescott that could be beneficial in addressing our unfunded liabilities and the fluctuations that we're seeing in our contribution rates. And so, I'd like, at some point in the future, an opportunity for us to discuss that further and then, talk with staff about that opportunity as it's presented itself. In addition to that, there were numerous different workshops that each of us attended, ranging everywhere from what's going on with airports in Arizona to the, what they call the infrastructure cliff, which, of course, is a good topic because we're going to be talking about our infrastructure plans today. In addition to that, we had the opportunity to sit down in depth with Representative Fan to discuss our community residence issues, and she had some recommendations related to some legislative ideas that, at the next update with all the staff about community residences, we're going to talk about if NARA, which is the organization that represents that group, may have a role to play in some legislation that could be pushed through this year. And certainly, as Karen Will knows, anything that the city's going to support needs to get the support of the council as a whole. And I think it would be valuable, after the staff meets, to talk as a council about what type of legislative priorities we may have there. We also had the opportunity to talk to Steve Pearce briefly about some of those issues, which was valuable. And then, Chris can talk more about the Cempo conversations that were going on. But overall, I felt this year was a fruitful year to attend the League Conference. As Mayor Protim Lammersen has said in the past, you know, I've already been asked, are you going to go next year? If there's something of value to the community to attend it, then yes. But other than that, quite a bit of information, there's PowerPoints from each of our individual presentations that we attended that's available. And I would pass from there.
Go ahead, Gene.
I'll go ahead. One of the most interesting sessions that I attended was actually the keynote speech by an economist named Elliot Eisenberg. And one of the main points he made is, this is the end of the rainbow for public financing. There will be no more low-interest rates, they're not going to get any lower than zero, they're going to go up from here. And the message I took away from that is, if we want to finance our public infrastructure, we seriously need to look at doing it very soon and use the tools we have, like our street sales tax, and think about possibly having voters approve an additional sales tax for our public infrastructure. There was another session on infrastructure that, in which other communities were presenting the tools they were using, and Flagstaff, the community where I lived, suddenly woke up to the fact that they could have a sales tax for streets, or once Prescott was doing something ahead of Flagstaff. So, they are putting a bond issue on their ballot, which will be financed by street sales tax. And again, it's something I think we should seriously take a look at. With regard to infrastructure financing ideas, I attended a session presented by a number of public works officials from the country of Texas. I did learn that Texas is a whole different country. It really is, has very different laws, very different tools for financing. If we were to have any of those advantages of public-private financing of public infrastructure, we're going to need to change our state laws, and I don't see that happening in the near future. But it was an interesting session. Finally, another very interesting session was on boards and commissions and learning what some other communities are doing in the way of eliminating boards and commissions. City of Sedona, Town of Marana are eliminating all non-statutorily required boards and commissions so that when they have an idea from the citizens or staff, it can be presented in a topic form, and people can come together, be more spontaneous discussion, more creative ideas can flow out of that, and then come back to their councils. They're trying to get away from what they call a silo effect, where you have a separate board for a certain topic, like historic preservation or the library, and it's more, it has a broader, more fluid feel to it. I thought it was very interesting. I don't know if it would work or if Prescott is ready for that, but something to consider in the future.
Just as a point, we cut several five years ago, and, but they always seem to want to come back and live with you. And a lot of that is because of the open meeting law. If you formalize a committee, then it has to comply with all of the open meeting law requirements, and that's what the media, that's where they get their information. So, if we could cut them all, I think it'd be wonderful. Is it possible? Probably not, but...
Chris?
Yeah, just, you know, you got to talk to and meet with a lot of people. I was talking with a councilman from a city down south, and he kept telling me that it takes eight years to get anything done, it takes eight years to get anything done. And finally, I called BS on that one, and I told him that, you know, I started telling him all the things that we as a council have done in the last two and a half years, and we really have accomplished quite a bit. You know, it doesn't have to take a long time in government, we can kind of speed the process up a lot. Went to a session on what you do as a leader matters, lessons from the Holocaust, that was pretty much for personal enrichment there, but it was headed up by our own Sheila Pope at Yavapai County. It was a good way to look at when events start to occur, what is your obligation as a leader? What do you have to do to prevent bad things from cascading and getting big? And there was a lot of things going on today that could be applied, actually, to some of the things that happened back then. Charlie touched on the PSPRS. It was a very good discussion, and I think we've made contacts where we can move that forward, and we have the contacts now to talk with those people. The lunch with Karen that I went to with Charlie was fantastic. I mean, she's asking us, as a state leader, what can I do to help you guys on this community residence deal? So, I think we have a chance to really get some things going there.
Can we just call it Group Homes?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
The Group Homes. Okay, then, we went to a thing called the Showcase of Cities and Towns, and I think this is what you were calling frolicking, because it was pretty much all frolicking that night, for sure. All the cities put up their little booths, and you walked around. But one good thing that came out of that is I kind of bumped into this guy that was at the State Parks booth, and he turned out to be the man from State Parks. And he said, we really need to do something in Prescott. And he said, we really need to do something in Prescott. And my ears perked up like a German shepherd, and that started a whole new conversation right there. So we'll see if anything comes out of that. Don't want to publicly talk about those things we were talking about yet, because it's all just dreaming, but I think it's good dreaming. Rural Policy Forum, got to meet with a lot of other, the rural communities around the state, talk about what everyone's doing that's right, things that didn't work out for them. It was a good thing to be at. Arizona Airports was a good session. It's growing your aviation asset. And there are some people doing some amazing things with their airport. And what this thing did to me was I said, you know, we really need to push that forward. If that's going to be the center of our economic development efforts, we need to put some money into that sooner than later. Get our plan that we've laid out, instead of making it over 20 years, maybe we can shorten that time up somewhat. But that really needs to go, and I think it truly helped the citizens of Prescott. Arizona Sonora and Mega Region Discussion, that was on our trade with Mexico, and they had a bunch of leaders from Mexico up there, too. I don't know how much that really helps the Prescott region, but when you talk about infrastructure and where the state's going to start spending its money, if they start pouring it all into this project, there ain't, because it's going to be a lot for our little highways or whatever. But I think they're going about it right. At least the discussion's starting. We got to keep, I think Gene was talking about Texas, you know, the trucks are wanting to come from Mexico into Texas, into California. Arizona ports and entries are just not up to snuff. We could really benefit, that's our biggest trading partner. To ignore it would be stupid. Rural Economic Development Tools and Programs, that was another good session, and that really, there's a lot of money out there that we can use that we don't have to do in traditional ways. I think some of them that I saw, I think, could get a community into trouble, but other ones, I think, are smart. Something that Gene mentioned as well just now, money's never going to be cheaper than that, so maybe we should spend a little bit, but we ought to do it in a smart way and make sure that it pays off. We can't just, you know, whip out the Visa card and start going. But, you know, when it comes to airports, when it comes to roads, maybe, and infrastructure, maybe this is the time to do something.
Thank you. Okay, Henry?
Mayor, thank you for that opportunity.
We'll continue the other boards and commission reports after that. Henry, Charlie, thank you for doing what you did, bringing up PRSP, and I'll bring it up again.
Very good. Thank you all very much, and I'm sorry, Henry, that I will miss part of your presentation.
Quite all right, Councilman. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Henry Hash at Public Works. Thank you for letting us be here today. I think our presentation is a good segue to what the police chief presentation was all about, talking about public safety, traffic, and that's what we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about roads. This is something we use every day. We're going to talk about our traffic, traffic control. We're going to talk about sidewalks. I believe we have a pretty good road system. And thanks goes to you for your support and your leadership for many years in the past to provide us with what we need financially. Thanks to city manager, thanks to our finance director, really, for us to be where we are today. With me also, we have Mr. Steve Oros, our Program Development Manager, Mr. George Henderson, our pavement preservation project manager, and Mr. Ian Metengly, he is our traffic engineer. So between George and Ian, mostly we're going to give a presentation. Hopefully, it would be educational, not only to you, but for the public. There are so many good questions come up on a daily basis for our one-cent sales tax. Good question, and rightfully so, people have a right to ask, such as, you know, first of all, roads are our largest asset in this community, in the county, in the state, any place you go, by far. So we need to preserve it. People ask, what is it that really we do? How do we do it? How do we come up with a list of all the priorities? Do we use formula? Do we use engineering? Do we use politics? Hopefully, these are all educational for you. What is the conditions of roads today? What are we going to be in five and 10 years if you keep the same level of financing and funding? Where are we going to be if we have less? Where are we going to be if we have more? And basically, this is the presentation we are going to do today. We work very closely with our police department, and very thankful to Police Chief, Deputy Police Chief, and the entire police department. Every time that we need help, they're always available. So with that, with your permission, Mayor and Council, I would like to ask Mr. George Henderson to come up with our first part. And we'll be available and happy to answer any questions that you may have at the end of our presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Council, can you hear me okay?
Got you.
Thank you. I have a tendency to be both soft-spoken and hard-of-hearing, so let me know if you can't hear anything. Thank you, Henry, for opening up the discussion. Appreciate the opportunity to talk with you today about the pavement management program. It is a topic that draws a lot of interest. As Henry commented, the city street system is very valuable. It's one of many assets that the city owns, but it's a very valuable asset that we manage by the pavement management program, which is a computer-based program that includes extensive database of the street-city inventory, broken down into blocks or segments. In total, there are over 2,700 segments in the city. Say if you're on Cortez, from Goodwin to Carlton, that's one segment. From Carlton to Aubrey, that's another segment. So overall, we have over 2,700 roadway segments in the city to maintain.
Wow.
Each one of those segments is assigned what's called a PQI. That's a pavement quality index, and that's a term that you'll see or hear come up fairly frequently in this discussion, because it's a controlling factor on how the streets are rated. Now, the pavement management program enables us in Public Works to answer important infrastructure management questions, like what assets do we have? What are they worth? What condition is it in? What has been done? What needs to be done? And when do we need to do it? Well, the street system is broken into functional classifications. You have your arterials, you have collectors, and you have local streets. This table demonstrates, through all the research, through the inventory, that we have just over 600 lane miles. Now, a lane mile is one mile a street, one lane wide. It's an industry-wide way of, you know, keeping track of your street system. This little table, and I'm sorry to bore you with tables and charts, but it is the effective way to learn about the program. This table demonstrates that in the city street system, we have over 43 million square feet of pavement. At a replacement value of $6.50 a square foot, that's a total replacement value of over $283 million. That's over a quarter of a billion dollars. In its current condition, it has depreciated by about $72 million. So right now, the value of our street system is $210 million. Like Henry said, that's a very valuable asset that the city owns. Now, what are some of the things that cause the streets to depreciate? You have wheelloads, traffic volumes, age is definitely a factor, age is, weather is a factor, and in some cases, improper initial construction. Again, sorry to bore you with a table. I know how much everybody loves that. This is what's called a pavement performance curve. Along the left axis is the PQI. A newly constructed pavement would start out with a 100 PQI. Now, pavements are typically designed to last for 25 to 30 years without treatment. Typically, they depreciate at a rate of about two points per year. Now, you look at this curve, it's not a perfect curve, because pavement's deteriorated at different rates during its performance lifetime. You look at the, the bottom axis is for time and years. You look at the, what's called the trigger point for pavement rehabilitation. When a pavement has a PQI of 100 down to 70, that's when you can use pavement preservation products. Once it hits that trigger point, between 70 and down to about 40, that's the area where you can do pavement rehabilitation. And once it gets below 40, there's not much you can do other than pavement reconstruction.
Excuse me. When you do pavement rehabilitation, does that bump you up in years? And are you still going to have the reconstruction after 25, no matter what?
We'll get to that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think, I hope to answer some of your questions before they come up.
Okay.
As we go through the slide presentation. This table is basically the same table, color-coded, kind of a light green. That's our good streets. The yellow is the moderate, and the red is the poor streets that require reconstruction. Our pavement preservation products are things like, you know, we do a lot of crack sealing. You have fog seals, scrub seals, slurry seals, chip seal has been a very big component of our pavement preservation program. And these projects, products generally range in price from $1 to $6 a square yard. Yes, sir? Did you have a question?
No.
Okay. $6 is the upper cost range, and that usually includes something like a multi-layer process. But once you get to that trigger point of 70, where pavement rehabilitation is required, that is typically a Millan overlay. Very effective, but still, now, instead of spending $1 or $6 a square yard, you're spending $25 per square yard. And then once that pavement reaches 40, there's not much else you can do to it other than complete reconstruct. And you can see what the cost does. It jumps up to $72 a square yard. So this amounts to the analogy of changing oil in your car. Don't change oil in your car now. You've all seen the old commercial about oil filters, pay me now or pay me later. So you want to keep the oil changed in your car, or you're going to burn your engine up and have to replace it eventually. These are some of the products that I was talking about that go into the program. The cost, you know, like I said, ranges from $1 to $6 a square yard for pavement preservation products. The Millan overlay is a highly effective process that you can use when streets are in that moderate condition. Here's what the councilman was asking about. This table shows the same performance curve that, say, if at point 80, you apply a pavement preservation product, that PQI jumps back up to 90, 95, and it extends your, the life of the pavement. Your trigger point at, say, about 12 years for pavement rehabilitation has now moved out seven years. So you've saved considerable amount of money by spending that, you know, $2, $3, $4 a square yard for pavement preservation, rather than wait until the street deteriorates to the point where it requires rehabilitation. And you look at the part of the table for reconstruct, you move that very expensive cost out by seven years. Now, this process can be repeated. It's not necessarily going to last forever that you can do that, but a well-constructed pavement, that if you keep up on pavement preservation, on like a five-to-seven-year cycle, that extends the life of your pavement considerably. Now, this is the same chart, but doing a pavement rehabilitation. This is the Millan overlay. This is a highly effective process. And you can see by that shaded area how much that improved your pavement and how much that pushed out the need for pavement reconstruction. It has a profound effect. Now, what do we have? Our current program, you start at the top in the green cell, 389 lane miles out of our 600 lane miles is in good condition. Sounds like good news. But not necessarily. You look at the yellow section, the moderate, we have 143 lane miles. And to do a pavement rehabilitation on those 143 lane miles, you're looking at $28 million cost. And we have 68 lane miles, not a whole lot, but still, when you talk about the cost for doing reconstruct on those 68 lane miles, you're talking about a $40 million cost. Now, so that gives you total current needs, as of today, right around $72 million. But we have a current annual budget of about $4.5 million. And that's what becomes a difficult process each year, is figuring out how to equitably spread out that $4.5 million when you have $72 million in need. A concept that a lot of people might think of is, well, you need to take care of the worst streets first. And that, there is an expression in the industry called worst-first scenario. If we were, over the next 10-year, you know, it would take, you know, with 68 lane miles of streets requiring reconstructing today, it would take 10 years to reconstruct those streets. And so over that 10-year period, you'd spend $72 million and reconstruct about 68 lane miles. But what happens to the rest of this system during that period? And this chart demonstrates that. You look at your moderate streets, where we had 143 lane miles. Over a 10-year period, it's highly unlikely any of those are going to survive, and they will most likely drop down into poor condition, thereby requiring reconstruction after year 11. Now, instead of adding $40 million in need for reconstruct, you're going to have $86 million in need for reconstruct. You look at your good streets, you'll be able to maintain maybe 100, about a third of the system will stay in good shape, but about two-thirds of the system that is in good condition will deteriorate. Remember, two points per year, it will deteriorate to where it requires pavement rehabilitation. So now you have, instead of a $28 million bill for rehab, you're going to have a $52 million bill. So your total need, if you go by the worst-first scenario, you're going to more than double, or virtually double, the amount of backlog after that 10-year period. So in the industry, that's considered not the best way to go about managing a pavement system. This is based on our current budget, about $4.5 million annually. If you take more of a balanced approach, which the department has a tendency to do, this is just a scenario, if you'd used 20% of the annual budget for pavement preservation, and 40% for rehabilitation, and another 40% for reconstruction, instead of reconstructing just, or improving 68 lane miles, you're going to improve over 380 lane miles, you know, by doing a more balanced approach of allocating the resources. In the meantime, with that balanced approach, things are still, you know, the streets that you're not able to spend resources on, you look again at the yellow zone, and, you know, probably during that period, you're going to improve 85 lane miles, but you're going to have about 38 lane miles that will drop down into poor condition that require reconstruction. You'll have about 20 lane miles will stay moderate. So now, in that yellow section, you're pretty much broke even, but you also lost ground on the reconstruct. You know, or now, instead of starting in year one, where we had a $72 million backlog, you're going to have about a $79 million backlog. Definitely better than a $140 million backlog you would have if you did just the worst-first scenario. This is a different approach. Henry asked me to look at, look at what it would take, you know, to improve this system, instead of breaking even or actually losing ground. So just working through the data, I tried the $6 million annual budget. And you can see all the various, you know, how many streets you could improve during that same 10-year period by investing that additional $1.5 million per year. What's really significant is, is look at your total needs in year 11. Over that 10-year period, you would have spent $15 million, but you would have gained over $30 million in benefit from reducing the backlog. And I understand that in FY '16, our budget will decrease by that quarter, quarter cent on the sales tax. So we worked on the scenario on what that's going to result in. And this is, sorry to say, this is not opinion, and it's not a belief. You know, this is science. This is what will happen. With that reduction in the budget, our total needs after year 11 will increase to $98 million. And this is just a side-by-side comparison of the different approaches to the program. We start out on the left column with the worst-first, which is basically a recipe for disaster, $142 million. With a balanced approach, with a current budget, you'll end up at, in year 11, have, will have lost a little bit of ground. With that additional funding, you would have gained significant ground, from $79 million down to $46 million in immediate needs. And then you look at the approach with the $3.4 million annual budget, where the deficit goes up considerably. This is what the department has done historically over the last five years in trying to balance, you know, like we talked about, the three basic elements of the program. It's pretty well-balanced in thirds, that we did a third pavement preservation, a third rehabilitation, and a third reconstruction. So we don't just ignore one segment, you know, we try to spread it out. And likewise, with our functional classifications, it's pretty well-balanced on how the money's been allocated between the arterials, the collectors, and the locals. And what needs to be done? You know, annually, the department evaluates the street system to formulate the program to meet the needs within the available budget. And that's an attempt to maximize a benefit from what funds are available. Some of the criteria that we look at are traffic counts, type of remediation, location, cost-benefit analysis, budget, and of course, the budget controls the program. And utility assessment, that's a very important element that we look at, too. Obviously, we don't want to go out and repave a street, and next year, the water system blows up. So working with our utility... So working with our utility departments, you know, we make that evaluation to assure that that's not going to happen. And we also look at drainage assessment, too. And what we did in 2009, to try to help manage the program, we divided the city into eight pavement management districts. And those are the districts there. And not all districts are created equal. You look at the North Central District, that's the most heavily populated part of the city with the highest density of streets. You look at the North Section, it's not nearly as well-developed, and other sections will have less development than others. But, and then, of course, there's the Central District, which is downtown. And this is a map we keep at the office of the streets that have been improved since 2007. And you can see from the map that we try to spread the funding around equitably as much as possible. And this is just a little table showing what's been done since 2007. Out of our 600 lane miles, we have improved virtually half of them, not quite. But you also look at the local streets. We've improved over half the local streets, even though the local streets is probably our biggest problem area. Even though we've improved half of them, that means half of them have not been improved. Arterials, we've done a good job on getting those up to date, and like has been mentioned before, arterials carry an awful lot of traffic. And this is what ideally we would like the system to look like, and this demonstrates that a little money goes a long ways. So if anybody has any questions, we'll try to address them.
George, I noticed on there, you put down, conditions of asphalt were based upon certain conditions. And one condition I didn't see up there, which has always bothered me in a way, is the fact that using YAG standards or WAG/SWAG standards, in the past, the city of Prescott had a formula that didn't have enough aggregate, enough oil in the base mix to substantiate its length of longevity. Has the city changed that standard now to where that pavement will last longer? Because, again, going back to the way we used to do it, was a very poor way of managing asphalt. When you look at regions like, say, going to Mexico or in Phoenix, asphalt tends to last longer because of the moderate temperatures they have opposed to, you know, cold, wet, and dry temperatures. And when you have a lack of oil in your mixture, it tends to fall apart quicker when you have weather conditions that change. Have we changed our mixtures?
Absolutely. I think you were involved in that process several years ago, when you were observing, making observations to us that that mix doesn't look right.
I appreciate that.
And that's when we put our foot down, and we actually hired one of the local geotech firms to redesign our mix. And it's something that, you know, on a personal note, when I moved here, it was pretty obvious to me that this just doesn't look right. And so, that has been fixed, and I think the pavement that we're getting now is of much higher quality than what we were just five years ago.
I have seen a huge difference in it, and I think you can tell by not using such more of an aggregate base and more oil and less rock clusters in it, you have a better chance of it staying together longer.
That's absolutely correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mayor. George, thank you for the victoria. Henry's predecessor cautioned this community four or five years ago, when past administration led us down the path of taking to the voter the privilege of lowering a tax that was set aside to maintain and accomplish our roads and acquire open space. And we've ultimately damaged both by putting us into a position where we cannot ensure the, not, don't mean the word "ensure," "assure," the bond folks, where the money's going to come from, for going out and borrowing, where we had a full cent, now it's down to a quarter cent. And we were warned at the time, we can't take care of the roads with a full one cent as we have it today.
Right.
It would be my suggestion and hope that at some point, we can go back to the voters and say, we made a mistake. We need something different to maintain the roads, whether it's our police, or our fire, or our roads. We have to have mechanism in place to adequately maintain these basic services in this community. Water, sewer, and trash, we have ratepayers that we can adjust things as needed to take care of that infrastructure. With police, fire, and streets, we do not. Now, we're put into a position where most people on the planet understand the necessity of having a jail, a competent jail, on this side of the county to take care of what we're mandated by law to take care of. So now, we're going to be in competition if we were to go to the voter, just like we would be in competition if we went when there's a school bond issue. It's the same sort of thing. So in no way do I ignore the fact, your department, as well as police and fire, are dealing with a whole lot more traffic than what 40,000 people deliver on this community. And I respect the job you do, and we're trying to figure out ways to handle it all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. From what you just showed us, it just makes so much sense.
All right, bear with me just a little.
From what you just showed us, it makes so much sense to me to design a large capital improvement program where we can really expedite at a balanced approach, as you've shown, the preservation, rehabilitation, and reconstruction program. Just ramp it up, instead of paying for it as we go, so we can get it done, move ahead. And I really, really advocate for using public financing to do that.
I think comments were made previously that now's the time to do it, as far as interest rates.
Absolutely, yeah. And I had one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know how many bike lanes, lane miles, we have in the city of Prescott?
You know, that's not part of the payment condition assessment, so I don't know that.
Is there anyone in Public Works Department who knows that question?
I can discuss that when I do my presentation.
Great, okay, thanks.
Chris. Yeah, you know, ADOT's made almost a complete swap now. You know, they used to be heavy in creation of the new roads, and now they're almost, I think, 70% in pavement rehabilitation, because they're scared about money. Thanks for the presentation, because I don't think the general public knows, and I didn't know before I got into it, the difference between the dollars and cents, between reconstruction and just preserving what you've got. But, I mean, it's such a huge difference. This might be for Mark, but how much are we getting from HERF now? And if we were restored to full HERF, would that, how much of that would solve? Because I think we were only getting about $300,000 a year, though, from that, even at full, do you remember?
Yeah, I'll have to pull the numbers for you, councilman. I wouldn't want to give you any wrong information.
Because it seems like there's a movement to restore some of that. They played games with it a little bit this year, but if we had full restoration of HERF, how much would that be to the city of Prescott, do you know?
Well, the answer is not enough.
Yeah.
The mayor pro tem said it, it is the fact that for the infrastructure, the pavement infrastructure we have in this city, the current one-cent sales tax, which will be reduced to three-quarters of a percent, added to the gas tax revenue, which is distributed, is not enough together. And so, what that gets us to is, if, over the long term, if we are going to continue to have a serviceable system that is not all deteriorated and cratered and frankly unsafe, and certainly unattractive and not conducive to tourism, then we are going to have to provide some more resources in order to keep these pavements up. That's it. That's the only conclusion you can come to.
But it all adds up, you know?
It does, and just while we're talking about the financing, talk about the capital financing. And we have done a lot of that over the last few years in streets. We've done about $26 million worth of projects. That's pretty well, when we look at the available resources out beyond the 2016 reduction in the tax rate. The debt service, along with the ongoing daily operation of the Streets Fund, there really isn't a lot more room to do any more debt issue and be able to pay that debt at a three-quarter cent tax rate. So just to make that clear, there isn't a great financing option with the revenue stream that we have out there.
And thank you for holding some contractors accountable when subpar work is done. You know, like when we had a few projects that it wasn't a smooth surface, you guys held them to the fire, and I hope we helped back you guys up in that a little bit, and maybe we'll get quality, top-notch quality work from here on out.
That is the objective.
George, I have one question. Over the last several years, we've had to absorb the maintenance on some of the ADOT highways. Is that included in the 600 lane miles?
Well, that's a very good point. No, it is not. It's my understanding that we're just a few years away from taking over the rest of 89, from Willow Lake Road out to about Pioneer Parkway or 89A. That is not factored into here. And frankly, I don't know that when we took that roadway over, if ADOT intends to upgrade it before we take it over, I do not know that.
Craig, I think we've discussed that a little bit, but normally, they will bring it up to a good condition before we have to adopt it. But the traffic that those roads get is certainly more maintenance than what we're used to in the city. So this is a big thing. And we need to be thinking about that also, because more and more, where the policy is to partner with ADOT, particularly in roads that are within the corporate limits. So another hurdle to jump over.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, Jim? Okay, who's next?
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
I believe Mayor, Mr. George Henderson is next also to talk about our sidewalk programs. And I also just want to thank you. You realize that just a few million dollars, one and a half million a year or $2 million, in the long term, would say was tens of millions of dollars, or the opposite. That's why we're getting a bit nervous. Roadwork is expensive. You know, he put some numbers. Just the project we are doing currently, Park Avenue, one mile, $6 million. Roadwork is pretty expensive. We have $4.5 million a year to be reduced by 25%.
Henry, I think, you know, that $6 million in the last study there, but probably when we factor in the ADOT properties, you're probably looking at another million a year, I'd say, on the downside. So I think that we ought to go ahead and try to factor those other numbers in as a planning tool, because they're going to be there.
Mayor, I was going to wait till the end, but I'd like to just say that in the future, we should really consider, before we jump in and widen roads and increase the lane miles and developments that we incorporated into our city, a plan when we take in those developments, how are they going to be taken care of once it's been turned over to the city? I mean, these are things that, you know, and also, maybe there's a point in time that there's certain roads, we can reduce the lanes and go back down to two instead of four, two with a median. So just thinking outside the box.
Okay, continue on, George.
Thank you. In March of 2013, the council approved code changes to improve sidewalks annually. Once that approval was given, Public Works Department conducted an assessment of the condition of the downtown sidewalks. That assessment was focused in an area concentric to the plaza, working its way out to Sheldon Street, McCormick, Mount Vernon, and LaRue. That assessment included developing a database, inventory of the sidewalks, you know, similar to what you see with the pavement management database, and it includes an assessment on the condition. And we gave sidewalks, I think I called it a sidewalk rating index, similar to the pavement quality index. And the assessment included generating that database and a map, overall map, showing trouble zones in our pedestrian access program. Once that assessment was done, the department put together plans and specifications for the 2014 sidewalks repair project. And that contract was awarded to Koya Contractors, Inc. Koya has since completed that work. Over 3,000 linear feet of sidewalks were improved in the downtown area. Following is just a brief photo album of some of the improvements that were made. This is what East Carlton Street used to look like. Now, this is in our downtown district, not too far from City Hall or from the plaza. Now, that is a 70-year-old concrete. That is not a 70-year-old concrete. Now, unlike the streets program, a worst-first scenario program for the sidewalks is probably the best way to go. You've got to get rid of those tripping hazards. It becomes a quality-of-life issue. We try to be a city that we're all proud of, you know, we're proud to be part of the community, not just the city organization, but of the community of Prescott. So it becomes a quality-of-life issue, having a decent pedestrian access. This is on Cortez, just two blocks from City Hall. And that's what it looks like now. This is on Marina Street, right at the corner of Carlton. I've got a couple of shots here. You see that big tree trunk and the effect it had on the sidewalk? And we had Streets Department put up barricades to prevent people from walking on that and tripping and falling and possibly injuring themselves. This is kind of a backup view of the situation. You can see there how much Parkway we have. Well, this is how we resolve the problem, without interfering with the tree. The tree, of course, has value to the community, too. And we just offset the sidewalk, did a pretty major cleanup in the area, and also did the handicap access improvements. There were probably, I think, nine handicap ramps that we upgraded as part of the program. You can see from this photo the nice, clean, safe feel about the corner now. This is on Alarkin. And now, I mean, you can imagine trying to navigate a wheelchair, or even a young mother with a baby stroller, you know, trying to walk across things like this. That's where, when I'm out doing the sidewalk assessment, I'm seeing so many people walking in the street, because actually, they thought it was safer than walking on the sidewalk. Probably not the image we want for our community. This is another shot on Alarkin, pretty bad. Now, pretty much what it should be. And this is the sort of thing, unlike the pavement program, sidewalks do not degrade at 2% per year. They're going to last. And I have some samples of the concrete that was torn out. And of course, we can't really fault our forefathers, they had to work with what they had. But the concrete they used at the time was very poor quality compared to what we use now. Everything is standard design, mixed design with proper proportions of cement and water and additives and aggregate. This is on Marina Street, you know, right downtown. Now, one thing you'll see here, you look at the before, you look at the after, are the improvements that were made along the sidewalk? That was one thing that was pretty common with this project. Property owners contributed. They came out and improved, made improvements along at their own cost. And you see little walkways coming from the street to the house. The city did not pay for those. There were a number of residents that hired our contractor and paid them to do those little side things. And that just improves the overall quality of the neighborhood as well. We saw quite a bit of that going on. This is on Marina Street, big old teepee in our sidewalk. And of course, this area gets a lot of foot traffic. So we eliminated some potential trip hazards along here. This is on McCormick Street, this is one of my favorites. And actually, you know, McCormick Street gets a lot of foot traffic. And that's the after, pretty much the same thing. You know, I'm not sure that's the way we want people to see our community. I think this is probably more of what we expect. And this was on North Mount Vernon, pretty good little tripping hazard there. And of course, the after, it just makes everything look better, not just the sidewalk itself, but everything around it just looks better. It makes the whole neighborhood look better. So this is actually, even though it says "future sidewalk repairs," this is actually on Park Avenue, and it's already been in the process of being replaced as part of the Park Avenue project. But like Henry is fond of saying, a little money goes a long ways. And personally, I look forward to the next project. This was personally gratifying to see the impact that it had on neighborhoods and on the community at large. So thank you.
George, again, thank you for the sidewalk presentation. Mr. McConnell, thank you for listening. Sometimes, it's about priorities. We have very little money. How do we spend it most sufficiently on the residents that live in the city of Prescott? Look at the demographic we're dealing with. And the fact of the matter is, our sidewalks are horrible, and they need to be fixed, and you guys-- you guys are paying attention to what we ask you to pay attention to. That's poor tourism promotion to have sidewalks like that. We want to be the best at what we can be. And if tourism promotion is an issue with us, terrible sidewalks and terrible streets is not a good thing to have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that was fiscal '14, right? Those?
Yes, it was. We have FY '15 coming up.
Okay, thank you. What time of the year do you do the sidewalks? Is that year-round or is that, does it have a season like asphalt?
Well, you don't want to be pouring concrete during the dead of winter.
Right.
You know, and that's probably been some of the quality issues in the past where people were pouring sidewalk in the winter. That's where you can get a condition called spalling. You know, it freezes on the surface, you know, the moisture in the surface, you know, it takes quite a while for the moisture in concrete, you know, to cure.
Get out, yeah.
And if you have moisture in the surface and freeze thaw, it can lead to spalling.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Last presentation from Public Works. So today, I will be providing a brief transportation update focusing specifically on our traffic signal system, the bike and pedestrian projects that we've done, and transportation grant opportunities. This information is being presented because these topics seem to be of particular interest to the public and by extension, the city council. Prescott's traffic signal system currently consists of 53 traffic signals citywide. All are operated, timed, and maintained by Public Works crews, with 50 being owned by the city and three owned by Yavapai County. The three county signals, we are maintaining under contract. And the two are, it's the two on Pioneer Parkway, Pioneer Parkway and Williamson Valley Road, and Pioneer Parkway and Willow Creek Road, and 89 at Yavp connector. All of our traffic signal equipment is compatible and therefore highly interchangeable. This is done to improve serviceability and inventory control and results in reduced costs and improved efficiency. All this is possible through sole source or equivalent purchasing. That allows us to specify which traffic signal equipment we buy that meets our specific needs. It also results in allowing us to maintain smaller inventories of spare parts and even borrow equipment from one cabinet to another if we need to do that. The city's traffic signal system operation is of particular interest to the general public. We get a lot of calls regarding just general operation. And staff felt it would be of interest to highlight some of the key features. In Prescott here, we use leading left-turn arrows for all protected movements. So what that means is that all left-turning traffic will receive a green arrow first, followed by the through indication. This is the most common type of protected left-turn arrow operation and is expected by most drivers. Additionally, where protected permissive left turns are allowed, that is the left turn followed by a green ball where we allow yielding after the arrow. We, we provide a green ball with no other left indication. So we just, we provide a green arrow. You move under the protected left, then we'll allow a green ball. We don't provide any type of flashing yellow arrow or any other indication like that. And while there are some of these innovative approaches, we have not found the need to use them in Prescott to this point. But staff is open to those if we need to, if the need arises at specific locations. One tool we do commonly use to improve intersection operation is the overlap right-turn arrow. And you can see that in this picture up here on the upper left. So this is Gail Gardner Way at Willow Creek Road, and you've got the left turn indication going for eastbound and northbound. And so this double left turn is going. And simultaneously, this southbound right turn movement is getting a green arrow to turn right. Now, we do that to improve efficiency at intersections. We have that at 14 locations of our 50 intersections that we control. We also have that, we've implemented that, not on our signals, but because of our request at several state-controlled intersections. The one that specifically comes to mind, most people have probably been through it, is Prescott Lakes at 69. As you come across in front of Lamb, you want to turn down to Lowe's. That right turn overlap was put in at the request of the city to improve the operation of the ADOT signal. The city uses in-pavement loop detectors. You've seen here, you can see those around town. You'll see the crack seal. We do not use video detection at this time. However, the county has it at two of our county-city maintained intersections, and so we are familiar with it. Crews do operate that system. The system basically accomplishes three things. Detection accomplishes three main things, and that is, they can detect when a car needs to turn left. It can extend time to improve signal efficiency. And it also is used with coordination and other signal timing efforts. This type of video detection provides more flexibility and is becoming the standard. So as we are looking to construct new intersections in the future, the city will look into that, weigh the benefits of the cost increases, and choose accordingly.
Do you know ballpark about what that is, to add video detection?
The difference between loops? Are you saying the difference in cost?
And the video detection. You know, that, that intersection at, coming off of 89A and Willow Creek Road? That sucker is smart. I mean, it knows how to move traffic through there. And I think that's one of them that has the video detection, isn't it?
89A, so you're saying the end of 89A and Pioneer Parkway, Willow Creek? Incredibly, no, that's on, that's actually in-ground loops.
Wow.
And that signal has got quite a bit of attention with improving the left turn operation from Prescott Valley.
Yes.
And the county and the city, we worked together with, actually, AECOM when we did some of the airport transportation studies to change some things and improve the signal timing. But it has time-of-day stuff in there.
Because it knows, too, if it's green. It can click on the turn arrow without having to go through the whole cycle again.
Yeah, and it also has advanced in-ground loops.
I see.
So it can, we can place loops, even if we use in-ground loops, we can place those out 400, 500 feet, depending on the speed, on a high-speed approach. And it can extend so that if it still sees cars are coming far out, it can extend the time and let you get through, et cetera.
Wow.
That's a pretty efficient.
Yeah, I've got a question. How often does the police department send you a report of traffic signals that seem to be a problem? Because I've got one that I've got a problem with, and I seem not to have any response to getting it fixed. Of course, I haven't talked to you, but I've talked to a lot of other folks. And that would be Willow Creek Road and Rosser. Forever, especially with the onset of school, people in the left-hand turn lane going south on Willow Creek Road cannot make a left-hand turn onto Rosser because that in-ground loop is not functioning properly and/or not set back from the light far enough to where the stacking, you have to have four or five cars or be there real early on in the cycle to have that arrow turn. Simultaneously, when that left-hand turn arrow should be on, the right-hand turn arrow off of Rosser going northbound should come on as well. And there's no right-hand turn arrow, so automatically, you're sitting there, which seems like eternity, to make a right-hand turn going on Willow Creek Road. And I think that that light in particular needs to have a look-see to improve it, especially now that school is in place and people making left-hand turns to take their kids to the high school or to Taylor Hicks School. The other thing, too, is the old statement of the picture that you have right here. I appreciate engineering listening to my comments and others putting in a left-hand turn arrow on Gurley and also at Goodwin. It's made a huge difference in moving traffic around the square. What has been a problem, though, however, forever, and I know that there's a terminology called scramble, crosswalks that are scramble, to be able to add in a crosswalk pattern where people cross and then traffic is allowed to go. And so often, when you're in that left-hand turn lane, turning left onto, onto Gurley Street off of Sheldon or Monazuma, so often, one car turns, and then you have pedestrian traffic in the summertime that doesn't allow more than one turn per light. And then if you'll ever watch the traffic patterns back up at 12:30, 1 o'clock, 3 o'clock on Monazuma at that particular intersection, it's because we have no protected pedestrian crossing and then letting traffic to move forward after that. So if that's something you can look into, I think it would be at least worth a try to do that, to improve pedestrian safety as well as traffic movement.
Yeah, we certainly, Willow Creek and Rosser, I'm aware of that intersection, exactly what you're talking about, and we can make some improvements to improve that. As far as downtown goes, we're more than willing to look at any concepts. We have, through the years, considered, I think it's a scramble or a barns dance. I think that was the engineer who invented that, the scramble system, and other concepts like one-way concepts. A lot of concepts have been discussed. We're certainly willing to relook at any of those to see what works best.
You know, we were talking a little bit ago, and the boxes that you had that control the intersections only could allow so many functions. Are we getting new boxes that allow more functions at an intersection?
Well, I'm going to assume that, well, I think you mean the phases or how many indications we could give, you know, and certainly, the technology, we have, you know, the newest and greatest econo-like cabinets, and they can pretty much accomplish anything that we want to do down there.
It just seemed like when you're heading westbound on Whipple and you get to Willow Creek Road and the light turns red, after the light turns red, the green signal comes on for the right-hand turn on Willow Creek Road. But because it goes yellow, red, then arrow, people are stopping, but other people know that the arrow's going to come on. So I didn't know if there's a way if it's, while it's still green, if that green arrow could come on, stay on, and stop that flow of traffic from actually coming to a stop sometimes and other times, people that know what it's going to do. It just, it creates a lot of excitement.
Yeah, so I'm clear, so I can follow up on that one. That's, so if I'm on Whipple, heading westbound.
Correct.
And I turn in the right turn pocket by the hospital.
Yes.
You're saying that my, the right turn overlap shows a yellow, red, and then immediately, the southbound left is released, and then it goes green. And you're saying, is there a way to get rid of that delay?
That's correct.
Yeah, certainly, we can look into that. So I'm clear.
Same thing with LaRue Street.
Sounds like we've got multiple issues like that. We'll look into those.
Ian, while we're on the downtown, have you ever looked at diagonal pedestrian crossings around the square?
That's exactly what Councilman Blair was discussing when he means the scramble.
Okay.
That's, yeah, you hold all vehicular traffic and then you allow all movement pedestrian phase. So you can cross diagonal, you can cross any which way you want to get to any corner. Is that what you're saying?
It's a blast.
Yeah, it's.
But it does help.
It certainly has its place, and I have a lot of information I've already looked into. You typically see those where you have very, very high volumes of pedestrians. And I know we have a lot of pedestrians. There's a lot of places with very, very high volumes of pedestrians, like Times Square and places like, you know, Tokyo, but I'll look into it.
We have Little Tokyo, right?
Yeah, we have Little Tokyo. So countdown heads have quickly become the preferred, the preferred method for communicating direction to pedestrians during street crossings. And with Prescott's heaviest traffic conditions occurring in the downtown area, they have been retrofitted to all the intersections. Additionally, all new intersections in town have them and will be installed. So if we retrofit any kind of signal, we put countdown heads. No more, no more hands and walk symbols. The downtown has special traffic issues and concerns because of the heavy pedestrian traffic. That's what we're talking about here. And one of the things that creates that is our beautiful bulbouts. We have these, we have, you know, a beautiful downtown where we've improved, it's a great improvement for pedestrian safety because we've minimized the crossing distances. But one of the things that does is it creates an issue with cars being held up by pedestrians crossing. And one of the common questions that we always get in the downtown involves, why don't the countdown heads that we've installed go to zero simultaneously with the yellow indication on the through lane? When the, when the light turns, why doesn't it go to zero? And we did this purpose, we did not coordinate those purposely so that we could stop pedestrians who are crossing and allow additional vehicle times so that the vehicles can clear the intersection. So what happens is, you know, people, the vehicles go, we get a green, and they get a walk, and they start to go. Both, both go. If there's one vehicle that needs to turn right here, there's so much pedestrian volume that they can't turn. And if you have, this guy is being quite aggressive, and he's moving around. A lot of drivers won't do that. They'll just stay in line and wait. And there's so much pedestrian traffic that by the time the countdown head, there's, there's no gaps in the pedestrian movement, so the car cannot turn. So we're holding all our vehicles, and then finally, the light turns, and let's say that they were coordinated to go to zero, the peds stop and the cars stop. Well, that guy's held up, maybe one car goes, but everybody else has stopped. And that could repeat over and over during the busiest times of the day. What we've done is, we've stopped the pedestrian timing early, or we've met the requirements for the clearance time, and then we've allowed additional vehicle time so that the pedestrians will stop and the cars will clear, hoping that we'll get five, six cars through. So I get that comment a lot from people who don't quite understand what is wrong with staff, who, who miss that. And one of the recommendations has been, well, why don't you release the pedestrians late? You know, you could release the cars early. The people don't seem to follow that direction. The pedestrians see the green, and they walk regardless.
And the further out they come, if you were to put concrete halfway out in the road, they'd be past the concrete.
Yeah, and, you know, and they're already out there. They're already out at the edge of the pavers, waiting to go. If they see a green, they will walk. So it's our attempt.
But that's gotten better. I think we are learning that in town, because I've noticed that, too. At first, as soon as they'd get the green, we were so used to walking, and they did. But now they aren't, they seem, people seem to be waiting.
And certainly, one of the things I didn't so much touch in this slide, but is the case is, we have been adding left turn, protected left turn movements down here to try to give the vehicles a chance to turn because that's, that's how, holding up vehicles as well. And so, you know, you can see, that's a five-section head. That has a, both of these are, have been added, north and south, and I think Goodwin and Monazuma.
Just a quick question. Red truck. Is he subject to a ticket? He's across the center line.
I think that's Marlin's truck.
Yeah.
No, wrong flavor.
You know, you know, I'm not familiar enough with the Arizona law, traffic laws, to say that. I would say that most drivers would not be ticketed for that, but, but I don't know the answer.
Looks like you got tired of waiting on the right light.
One other important thing about the downtown signals is that even though we have push buttons, you can see one up in this left-hand corner there. We do have push buttons at all our signals downtown, but they're all, they automatically recall for pedestrians during normal hours, up until 9:00 PM. You don't have to push the pedestrian button, you're automatically going to get the walk. And that's because we have so much pedestrian traffic down there. We traditionally operated it that way. A few years ago, we re-instituted our push buttons there because after 9:00, we disable the automatic recall, and then pedestrians are, have to push. And so that helps when there's less cars. You don't automatically get that 20 seconds of walk time when you could have shorter cycles to make it more efficient in the middle of the night.
If I can say thank you for what you do, I know it's not an easy thing to move traffic and people. The only other, other suggestion that I'd make, and I drive around this town a lot, would be a left-hand turn arrow at, help me, out in front of, what's the street Murphys is on?
McCormick, Granite?
Cortez?
Oh, Willis.
No, the side street there.
Willis.
Yeah, Willis.
Willis and Monazuma. Forever, there's people backed up in the left hand on both sides, going all directions. And it would seem to me that based upon the traffic flow down there, it might help to move that traffic through as well.
Add it to the list. I'll look at it, yes. So Prescott uses three primary signal timing methods. We use fixed time, actuated, and coordinated. So these methods are used depending on the needs of the roadway, the geometry of the intersection, and the age and capability of the equipment. While we do have a lot of intersections that have been upgraded, most are very modern. We do have some that, you know, for instance, out here, right here on the corner here, Cortez and Goodwin, that's one of our, it's got the oldest poles, it's got the oldest equipment. We're still using some fixed time. And fixed time is the most basic. It provides predetermined times for each movement. Pretty simple to understand. Actuated systems vary the timing of the signal phase, and they react to varying traffic patterns, typically have loops involved with that, or time-of-day. We can change things by time-of-day. And then coordinated systems are groups of traffic signals that are interconnected to provide improved efficiency. to provide improved efficiency through the corridor. And we, we have two distinct systems. We have the downtown system, which is six intersections. It's basically from Gurley and Marina, down through Gurley and McCormick, and then it ties into Goodwin and Monizuma. That's actually on there as well. And basically, it's running, there's a master clock with offsets, and it's providing progression eastbound and westbound, depending on the morning or afternoon, attempting to. And this is what's very difficult, is with the variations in the demand, for instance, you know, you come to Marina or Cortez, there's a lot less demand for traffic north and south than Monizuma. And so you have to have a system that matches if you're going to try to coordinate the signals. The overall time of the, the signal has to be the same, like 70 seconds. But to make that work is very challenging, when you have pedestrians, different volumes, left turns that you need to clear, and left turns that you don't. So it's there, it's not perfect, and I will admit that, but it's, it's always a work in progress. The other is an arterial system, which goes from Sheldon Street, basically Sheldon near Marina by the Albertson Center, goes out to Whipple, Whipple all the round, around to Four Points, and then it goes up Willow Creek Road. And that, right now, has approximately nine intersections. It's expandable to 18. We have the, we have the interconnectivity all the way out Willow Creek Road, and that one uses time of day as well. And basically, we allow additional time on the main line during the peak hours, AM and PM. We use emergency preemption in the city on most arterial signals. That allows emergency vehicles to receive a green light on the main line when activated. Fire and police vehicles, not ambulances. No private, no private companies have activation of our preemption systems. This improves response time and safety through busy intersections.
Wouldn't it be smart to do that, though? Wouldn't it be smart to give our ambulances access to that?
If you're driving.
If you're driving.
Well, I'd like to hear, Ian, your answer to that question, to the Councilman Kukunio's question.
Yeah. I guess, I guess my concern would just be for liability issues. That would be, that would come to mind. You know, does it sound like a good, efficient thing to do? Yes. Am I aware of all the liability issues of using a non-city vehicle to activate these city equipment? Yeah, I can't really speak to that, but it certainly assists our, our vehicles and our people.
Thank you.
Ian, quick question. When somebody raises a possibility of putting an intersection in with a lighted intersection, what's that, what's that run approximately, to bring in?
So a brand-new traffic signal?
Yeah.
$275,000 to $300,000, this is a nice round number.
Okay.
Battery and generator backup is also provided at 10 of our busiest intersections, to allow them to operate without infrastructure power during emergency. So intersections like Four Points, Gurley and Sheldon, they have capability to power themselves for some duration. If we have generator power, we can power them indefinitely, as long as we have fuel. This results in more efficient operation than temporary four-way stops if we have long outages of power. Other key intersections have been identified to expand the current system. So we would like to expand our system. This does increase the cost of maintenance on a signal, because you, if you have batteries, you have to replace those batteries, they only have a life that is so long. But it's very effective, and a lot of the new intersections do that. Most ADOT intersections, just as an example, include battery backup.
Well, I sat, I sat in horror and watched when the power went out on Willow Creek Road, and the light, the traffic signals went out, and you should treat that intersection as a four-way stop. And some people were stopping, others were blowing through it at 40, 50 miles an hour. I kept waiting to see the big boom. It didn't happen, but seems like we just don't know that stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I ain't getting out there.
So some of the future signal improvements we're looking to implement include the expansion of the use of pedestrian countdown heads. You know, apart from new intersections, those are the new standard, and they're very easy to use, and they're, they're quite good. So we'd like to expand that. Installation of accessible pedestrian systems, APS. We have a current request to look at this, near Willow Creek Road, along the corridor from Embry-Riddle University, down to Willow Lake Road. And this is for, this is for blind access to pedestrians who are blind. So that we're talking about, it's not, it used to be a chirp. Some of you might have been in places where the signals chirp or beep. It's changed to that. It now has tactile ADA push buttons, and it calls you, it says you're at this intersection, and it calls until you come to the button. But it has various features that do that sort of thing. And so we're looking at those systems. The city is not required to install those. And that, it's very important to note, that we're not required to install them. But most guidelines call that, say that you should do an engineering study to determine the need, based on a request or other factor. Expansion of the battery backup system, as we discussed, upgrade of the Goodwin and Cortez intersection, I mentioned that one right out here, needs new poles, new indications, it's pretty outdated. And then additionally, we anticipate several new signals to be added in the coming years. Some will come from ADOT highway turnbacks. We talked about the pavement coming back. We will also take, you know, if 69 is designed, widened, and we take it back, we will gain two signals. We will gain the Lowe's signal, and Prescott Lakes 69, which is one of the top collision. But we will take those signals. And other new and infill projects. So, moving on, just kind of a different subject, so we're off of traffic signals. Any questions before I move on to?
Just one. Often, I'm driving Willow Creek Road at Commerce, in that section where there's three signals. And when we talked about the Honda dealership being tied with Commerce, often I'm on Willow Creek Road, and one will turn red, and the other one turns green. Are those not tied together as they were requested to be tied together when that development went in?
They're not currently operating in that manner.
Can I ask a question? Why not? I mean, just for an example, 1:00 in the morning, you're going along Willow Creek Road at 40 miles an hour, you stop at three lights. It makes no sense whatsoever, when you start talking about the cost of fuel, and starting and stopping, and brake wear, when we have the ability to be able to change those functions.
Yeah, I, I think one of the reasons, it's going to become a lot more important to make that happen. And so, you know, especially as we open the new, the new store that's accessing with the Honda. But for the most part, the volume at the Honda dealer is very low. And so that traffic signal virtually sits in green on the main line, for the most part. Unfortunately, you've caught it when it didn't do that. You know, somebody came out. But if you, but if you...
No, the police caught me when I didn't stop at it.
Oh, I see, I see. That's worse. But, but tying it to Commerce and making it a timing, making that timing work where they're staying green together, or somehow cycling together, probably would have been more detrimental to make that happen in the past, when Honda was barely triggering any side street traffic. But as we now get that new tractor supply, I believe it is, as they come in and they start to see that, that will become a priority. And I have that on the list. I will make sure, we'll look into that. So moving on to just some bike and pedestrian enhancement stuff, I just wanted to provide an overview of some of the things that have been accomplished in the past several years.
Yeah.
First, as we already mentioned, we have converted all the downtown signals to countdown ped indications. That was done for pedestrian safety, and to enhance, you know, pedestrian use downtown. The enhanced crosswalk on Gurley Street at Summit was constructed. That was done by City Cruise some years back, in a partnership and by petition. And you can see that up here in the right, upper right-hand corner. Through a partnership with PAT, the Snake Bike Rack, as you see down here, was installed at Goodwin Street, on the street right away, at the library. Through a partnership with P-Back, when they were still functioning as a committee. All-street facility issues for bikes were reviewed. So they identified a list of things that they needed fixed to improve on-street conditions. That included cross-welding of drainage grates, improvement of bike lane transitions at intersections such as Four Points and others, to improve safety. In addition to these projects, we've added 13, the city has added 13.5 miles of new bike lanes on Prescott Street since 2003. To answer your question from earlier, Councilman Wilcox, I believe, we're, we're in the range of 30 to 40 miles of bike lanes. So when we say we have 600 lane miles of roadway, we have approximately, in the range of 35 to 40. And I will say one thing about that, for instance, you can see a bike lane here that's been installed on Iron Springs Road, same, this is a different version. So this road would have five lanes. So if we were to measure a mile, this road has five lane miles. So I'm just trying to express that, I know that number sounds low, and it can be improved certainly. But you only have the opportunity to install two bike lanes per mile, so two bike lane miles, on a road that's a five-lane road, where you would get five roadway lane miles, on many of our roads where they are. So for instance, Willow Creek Road is a five-lane section. You understand what I'm trying to compare? So even if we had bike lanes on every street, which is not even really the desire, we still could never get to 600 lane miles because of the fact that there are more lanes per roadway, you only have two, an opportunity for two bike lanes on a road when you can have five lane miles of roadway. But that is quite an accomplishment, when you look at the fact that we've basically added a 60% to 70% of what we had. And we've done that in a relatively short time. Much of these have come from recommendations from the Bike and Ped Master Plan, the 2003 Bike and Ped Master Plan, that was part of the general plan. And these are just some examples of where they are located. You know, Rossar Street, Gail Gardner Way, Williamson Valley, all the way out from Iron Springs to the city limits, Mount Vernon, Willow Creek Road. Willow Creek is extensive. It's basically, you know, it's been added from Willow Lake to Hoss, but we have them from Four Points, all the way out to Embry-Riddle. And then certainly, I included, I don't know that I included this mileage in it, but White Spar Road was included as part of the ADOT project. That's separate mileage.
Ian, somewhere in the vast vault of knowledge, how many miles of road do we have deserve such a number without saying lane miles? I mean, that would probably be a better...
Center lane miles.
Center lane miles, okay.
Yeah, I don't think any of...
Okay. I mean, that would probably be a better barometer to, to our bicycle lane to, to lane miles.
And I think additionally, it might be useful, especially for Councilwoman Wilcox, to know the, the mileage on our bike route system as well. Because we have an extensive sign bike route system, you know, so with the total of our, our bike system. A few other projects included the partnership between the city, PAT, and P-Back, to evaluate and correct the existing bike route system, what we just talked about. That was done, where they reviewed the system and recommended all improvements to the route signing that we had in place, and, and we took care of that through Streets Department. The 6989 Interchange Project included sidewalk and multi-use paths. You can see that out here in the upper right. That basically connected Sheldon Street and Yavapai College. There was a gap. This project, you know, as you know, you can currently go on Sheldon Street, you can get, from Embry-Riddle, you can get on this trail and move all the way over and get to Heather Heights, go underneath the underpass. You basically come down by the VA entrance, crossover, go back under, and then come over. It's safest way to keep them separated from the roadway traffic. But there was a gap in the, for pedestrians. It went into Embry-Riddle, but you'd have to go, sorry, it went into Yavapai College. But there was, you'd have to maneuver through their campus, circuitously through their campus, and then probably hit some of their roads. We actually included an extension of this sidewalk that runs behind the retaining wall, there along that parking. And it goes, and it comes out on the sidewalk there, right in front of Yavapai College, by their new electronic sign. And so that made it, that was a nice connection for, you know, enhancing pedestrian bike access. Ruth Street Reconstruction Project, there's actually a wider uphill bike lane. It's not striped, but the lane markings are offset, so that, we actually did that in relation with the bike advocate people, to provide a wider climbing lane, without any detriment to the, you know, the motoring public. The most people don't even know that's there, but there, it's wider uphill, to allow more room when they're going slower. They feel like, coming downhill, when they can basically keep with traffic speeds, 25, 20 miles an hour, they don't need as much width, so we offset those things. We've done that in other projects as well. And finally, Public Works, as George mentioned, that's, that's one of his best pictures there. Great example of the work that he's doing there, and Public Works is doing. That's, you know, $200,000 each year to repair and replace the sidewalk. So apart from these projects, staff has worked to plan and implement bicycle and pedestrian improvements whenever possible. Some of these improvement, some of these efforts, sorry, include providing technical assistance and collision analysis for P-Back, as they were updating the Bike and Ped Master Plan in 2009. And I think they're currently using that draft in, in, in their general plan update. Completing a sidewalk and bicycle inventory study, so they could, we knew what the city had as far as our transportation system had, and that included GIS maps. Completing many, as we saw, of the major 2003 bike and ped recommendations, and adopting in 2008, new roadway standard plans. You can see that? This is just an example. Which include provision for bikes, striped bike lanes on all streets classified as local, commercial, or higher. Prescott Public, Prescott Public Works has been active with many community partners to promote bicycle and pedestrian use. Some of the involvement includes partnering with PAT to host bike stenciling events. We've done that during Bike Month annually. We've partnered with Prescott College to host seminar for advocacy in government at their request. We've served as this, the Public Works served as a staff liaison for the Transportation Coordinating Committee and P-Back, until their sun setting a few years back. And these partnerships and efforts led to city staff receiving two Central Yavapai Community Leadership Excellence Awards in 2009 and in 2011. And then these awards recognize contributions to alternative transportation, bicycling, trails, and safe routes to school. Lastly, just wanted to review some of the transportation grants that we've been working on, and we've actively pursued, and report specifically on some of the successes in those areas. Primarily, we look at six grant programs, and they fall under the current transportation bill, MAP-21, formerly Safety Lou, it converted into MAP-21. They are the Highway Safety Improvement Plan, the PARA Study, the Planning Assistant for Rural Areas, TE, STP, Safe Route to School, and Transportation Alternative Program. In this effort, we've been successful in receiving just over $3 million since 2009. And it's a summary of the money, 424,000 in transportation grants, 1.15 in safe routes to school, infrastructure grants. These are infrastructure, these are not for any other purpose. Two, sorry, I take that back. 220 in PARA grants was paid for our Willow Creek realignment study, and it paid for the SunDog, SunDog Road, SunDog Connector, yeah, sorry, SunDog Connector study. And then we've received, we're receiving 1.25 million in bridge rehabilitation money for the Overland Trails Bridge. And that does not include another 500,000 to 600,000, depending on where the numbers fall, for the HSIP Simbo Signing Grant, which is, just finished up. We got our first 550 signs completed in the city, and that's for improvements in sign reflectivity and posts. And then we're going to get another equivalent amount, 500 to 700 signs next year.
Boy, those new ones glow, don't they? You don't know how bad they were until you see the new ones.
Yeah, and the sign posts are very sturdy in the wind.
And you guys are installing the breakaways now as well?
The, the, the actual square post, that is a breakaway design. So...
They have that little coupler on there?
If it has a coupler, yeah, that's, that, you can see those some places downtown, where we're setting posts in concrete. But for the most part, if they're just set in, in like a concrete foundation, and not in existing concrete, they'll just be the square posts in. But they break away on the, on the holes. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Ian, thank you for pointing out several things. Number one, it was a great presentation. It's late in the day. I appreciate you staying here. We haven't ignored certain items that were in the general plan of 2003. Here again, as I said earlier, it's a question of being... Here again, as I said earlier, it's a question of being able to leverage your assets and your resources to accomplish as much as you can by paying attention to priorities. And I think you did a good job in demonstrating, we haven't ignored bicycles, we haven't ignored signals, we haven't ignored traffic flow, we've tried to pay attention and pay for what we can afford to pay for when we have the money, and we can leverage the grants. So, thank you very much.
Chris. Yeah, I just wanted to say, Ian, your job is so easy, because, you know, council and every citizen in Prescott knows exactly what it'll take to fix the traffic situation. Thank you for fixing downtown, all those improvements. I mean, they really make a big difference. And another thing, too, is anytime someone calls me and I refer them to you, you take care of them quickly, you respond to them, they may not hear what they want to hear, but, you know, that really makes us look good, when we can toss that situation to you. And, you know, we could spend $5 million and have no one in the audience, but if we put a, a stop sign in the wrong place, we'll fill the house. So, traffic is very close to everyone, and when you guys respond to that so fast, it makes our job real easy, too. Thank you.
And what I'm learning today is that the work of improving streets is ongoing, and, and so is the work of improving bicycle safety. And I, I see that the input you've gotten from P-BAC was valuable, and I think it would be very helpful to the Public Works Department and to the council, if we had a similar committee reformed, put together, so that there's an avenue for members of the public to bring issues to the attention of the committee, and then to Public Works, so that you can address them, to see if they're feasible to incorporate in your plans. I'm told that a majority of the council is not willing to approve the reestablishment of the committee. I don't know how that person knows that, but I certainly hope that's not true, and you will keep an open mind with respect to a proposal to reestablish a committee, to help Public Works and help us improve the community and provide amenities that are important.
I thought we were going to get rid of committees.
No, I wasn't suggesting that at this point.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but that wasn't a committee that was generated by the city, that was a committee that was generated by the bicycle folks.
P-BAC?
P-BAC. If I'm not mistaken, Ian, isn't that not right? We had a group that got together and they created a committee that helped put together the 2003 plan and the 2009 plan, and at that point in time, Lisa Barnes was the executive director of P-BAC as a private organization, that became an appointed person with the Transportation Coordinating Committee, that offered input from that group. But it was not a group that was put together by the city of Prescott, if I remember correctly.
Specifically, Lisa Barnes was with PAT. So, there's three, there's two different P groups. There's PAT, which is Prescott Alternative Transportation, which is a nonprofit, and she was with them. They were not affiliated with the city. And then she did serve on the TCC as one of the members. P-BAC, TCC was certainly a, you know, a official committee of the city. I believe P-BAC was an official committee of the city, I believe, but I'm not as familiar with that. But Lisa Barnes and PAT were not. She was just a serving, a sitting member on the TCC.
Well, I don't disagree with Gene. I think there needs to be representation from that specific bicycle group organization that gives feedback to the city on new plans and street reconfigurations. I think it's important. So, I'm not against that. The only thing I, I say is, like Mayor said, we need one more committee to dictate policy, I think is wrong, but I think having somebody that's part of the bicycle community, uh, you know, you have several bike shops where you have folks that are involved in that kind of stuff, they'll be willing to sit with Ian to talk about bicycle fault areas in the community, they're very well-versed in that, so.
So, it would take some kind of committee, or, or ad hoc committee, task force, whatever, a group that meets and meets with Public Works.
We'll give it a name, yeah. Henry Moore?
Right, Henry? Yes, sir. No, and I apologize if this took longer than we, we anticipated, and thank you for, for staying here. No more, just want to say thank you to all of you. You call us regularly with issues that we don't necessarily see every day, a traffic light, a linda, or other thing, all of you, and Councilman Blair, but I just want to tell you, we are very responsive. The answer may not be what necessarily people who call want to hear, but I think we are obligated to see. So, thanks again for listening. Thanks, Ian, and George, and Steve for, for being here.
Good, good presentation and good information. Eye-opener in many cases, yeah. Thank you very much. Anything else? We're adjourned.
Henry, I got one for you.
You know, I feel left out, Mayor.